In New Mexico, we know hard work is how things get done. I first learned that by being raised by a single mom. And hard work is how I got Republicans and Democrats in Congress working together to protect our veterans, to help our ranchers, crack down on cartels at our border, and hard work is how I lower our costs for food and rent so that we can all get ahead. I'm Gabe Baskis, and I approve this message.
Ready? Good morning, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regular commission meeting Wednesday, September 11th, 2024. I'd like to call this meeting to order and have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Markort.
Here.
Commissioner Matherly.
Here.
Commissioner Borella.
Here.
And we are going to have the invocation this morning by Matt Clark.
Good morning. If we bow our heads heavily, Father, as we move forward today, remembering the tragic events of 23 years ago, that we never forget the lives that were lost doing the work that we do as first responders, protecting and serving the public. We ask that you guide us today through our meeting, that everything runs smoothly and for the betterment of the community. We ask season all things.
Amen. If you'll join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I salute the flag of the state of New Mexico, the zeus symbol of perfect friendships among united cultures.
And I think we're going to do a moment of silence, even though we had the prayer, but I just want to make sure that we all remember 9/11 and what happened that day and how many citizens that we lost. We lost Al Nershon here in our very own community. And so if we could just take a minute and just remember him. Thank you. Okay, so we've got a couple of proclamations. I'll start off with Sergeant Willie Estrada Day. Whereas Sergeant Willie Estrada was born in Almagordo, Otero County, New Mexico, on June 8th, 1929, and whereas Sergeant Willie Estrada was inducted into the U.S. Army in January 1951, and whereas Sergeant Willie Estrada served with the 10th Battalion, 45th Infantry Division, whereas Sergeant Willie Estrada was killed in action on 22nd of September, 1952, near Banjual, Korea, and whereas Sergeant Willie Estrada is the only recipient of the Distinguished Service Cross from Otero County, and whereas Sergeant Willie Estrada is one of only 27 distinguished service cross recipients from the entire state of New Mexico. Now therefore, we, the Board of County Commissioners of Otero County, New Mexico, do hereby proclaim the 22nd day of September as Sergeant Willie Estrada Day and urge all citizens to recognize and participate in its observance, proclaimed during the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners this 11th day of September, 2024. And the next proclamation is Constitution Week, whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government and a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas September 17th, 2024, marks the 236th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate it, and whereas Public Law 915, Give America, designating September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, as Constitution Week. Now therefore, on behalf of the Board of County Commissioners, we hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd, 2024, to be Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideas the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guardian of our liberties. Did we have someone here to get this? I thought you were still here. Did you want to get a picture?
Yes, please.
Manhood.
I don't have Willie, do I?
You got one.
Okay.
Thank you.
There you go. Thank you, Mia.
Does she get this original?
Yes.
Thank you for coming.
And I don't know if we had anybody here for Willie.
I don't think so.
Okay. Okay, so we're going to move on to our sheriff's office report.
Good morning, Commissioners. David Black, Otero County Sheriff. For the sheriff's office in August, we had 2,450 calls for service, equates to about 81 calls per day, little down from the past couple of months. Generated 257 investigative reports, investigated 61 traffic crashes. We had a total of 62 arrests for the month, served five warrants, issued 105 traffic citations. This number was kind of elevated, was served 431 subpoenas for the courts. It's about double what we normally do. Calls responded to in Tularosa was 71, and that's about half of what we have been doing, so things are looking better up there for the Tularosa Police Department. In Narcotics, we had nine search warrants. We had seven arrests, one agency assist, 51 case reports, three checkpoint cases, five vehicles seized, five firearms seized, two fugitives were apprehended. We did assist with two jail possession cases. We seized 82.19 grams of meth, 9.8 grams of marijuana, 25 prescription pills, 1.5 grams of cocaine. And this is something we have not seen yet in Otero County that has now shown up. We got 3.1 grams of fentanyl powder. That's bad stuff because it gets out, it can make a mess really, really quick. And we did seize 17,965 fentanyl pills, a total of about $278,000 worth of illegal narcotics. And we'll say with the addition, we've got like some additional personnel that have been signed to our narcotics task force now. They are doing a lot of work both in Otero and Lincoln Counties, and I think you'll probably see numbers like this continue. They're doing a lot right now. Special events that we went to in August. We assisted with a backpack giveaway in Chaparral. August 13th through the 15th, we had our Fall Dare classes started with La Luze Elementary. And at first for us, we were actually teaching at Holloway Elementary now, Sunrise Elementary, and Yucca Heights Elementary, and Clodcroft Elementary. So all five schools got started with their classes between the 13th and the 15th. On the 17th, we hosted a new applicant assessment in Almagordo, and with that, we got a couple of prospects out of it. On the 19th, we had three deputies that were, let's say, recruits right now that started the academy in Hobbs, where it is right now that they're doing really well over there. We attended Coffee with a Cop event at Albertson's. We attended the Thrive Breakfast Event to kick off the New Mexico Dare Conference in Ridosso this year. On August 30th, we met with Walmart. They gave us a $2,000 donation for our Shop with a Cop program, which is, again, between Deputy Robles and Stephanie from Thrive, they're major contributors in getting that program running. Training for the SO has been ongoing with numerous legislative mandated classes being completed as part of our annual and biannual training. Again, we have the opportunity to participate in a program sponsored by the New Mexico Counties. This program that they purchased and are allowing us to utilize and stuff, it's going to help us update policies and procedures. Once we get these updated, I'm guessing probably in about two months, we will have what we call daily training bulletins, where a policy will go out to each one of the deputies. They got to read it, they got to understand it, and they take a little quiz to make sure they understand it. And this will happen annually. They will go through every policy that we have once a year. It's going to be a lot, but it's needed. Honor Manning. Currently, we have the three, Nathaniel Woodring, Javier Ariano, Dynasty Guzman, they are at the academy in Hobbs. We have four deputies that are currently in the FTO program by way of graduating the last academy, or we had them hired as lateral transfers. So I'm hoping in about a month and a half, they'll be on solo patrol, we'll utilize them. And we do have six potential recruits in the background phase, several others that we got scheduled for some interviews in the rest of this weekend, ends next week. So this leaves me with five open positions to be filled in the near future. I hope, my goal is by the end of the year, we'll be fully staffed again. So as long as we don't have people decide they want to retire here. On our vehicles, we have received two new Tahos from the Upfitter, got them placed in rotation in Mexico. We are waiting on notification that the money can be used. With this money, I plan to purchase three new community services trucks. That's the ones that serve the subpoenas and do all of our ACO stuff. If you've seen those trucks, they are wore out, so we're going to get them replaced, get them outfitted, new equipment, get them in our rotation. Last thing I'll tell you about here is, kind of wanted to address the recent deputy involved shooting of Elijah Hadley. There is a process that has to be followed. At this time, several external law enforcement agencies are conducting a thorough investigation into the incident, and we are fully cooperating with each agency. The Otero County Sheriff's Office is not involved with these investigations other than to provide evidence as requested by these agencies. It seems slow. It is vital that every step is conducted meticulously to ensure a thorough examination of the facts. Once the investigation is completed and I am presented with the findings of the investigation, the findings will be reviewed and necessary steps will be taken at that time. So we're just kind of in a holding pattern, waiting for the results of the investigation. And with that, I'll stand for questions.
Sheriff Black, last night I was at the Chaparral Community Meeting. There was a gentleman there, he said he was a retired law enforcement agent for 35 years, and he was in the area, walking around, looking at stuff. He was with Elizabeth on her walking team. On Luna Street, he says he's noticed a bunch of gang signs, symbols. He said that those symbols that he has noticed were bad news. I don't know if there's anybody in your department that understands what some of those symbols might be, but if you remember about a year ago, I asked you to check in the Luna Street, that's where the shooting was. So it was dark after I got out of the deal, so I couldn't find what they was talking about, so.
Did they give you any kind of a block number, 300 block or something like that?
I looked on the map, and Luna wasn't all that big. It was right off Escondida from Lisa Down. So he said it was really obvious, you can't miss them.
I will get some deputies over and get some photos and stuff. I do have one deputy that is well versed in all the gang stuff. He attends those conferences all the time, so we'll run it by him. Plus, we'll, there's a couple of other people we can run it by to give us some help on it. I know there's some concern with certain gangs going right now. We need to see if this is any affiliation with them, or is it, you know, something local to the Chaparral area. We'll, I'll find out.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question about the consent agenda items, the MOUs between the city, Clodcroft, and, okay. I know that the funding is coming from Operation Stone Garden.
Yes, ma'am.
Is this in addition to applications, or does this come out of that funding directly?
We've got some extra money this year. I can't spend everything that we've been allocated, so we're trying to bring them on as friendly forces and so they can start helping us with some of these patrols, and they'll get some of that money. It'll come out of my line, out of my budget with Stone Garden. The next Stone Garden, we've got that allocated already into where it's not going to, it's not going to take away from us, it's going to be in addition to.
Okay.
You want to give us a report on your recent trip to the border?
Yeah, we went to Yuma. Well, actually Winter Haven, California, which is just right across the border from Yuma. It was hot, it was miserable. It was 120 degrees the whole time we were over there, so. But it was interesting just to see, I've been to seven different spots on the border now, from San Diego to McAllen, Texas, and all the places in between. I hadn't been to Yuma yet, so that's why I want to go to that one. Yuma has same problems, it's just a little difference in, how would I put it? The wall, the wall is there, but the wall has big gaps in it. You know, they had a lot of issues where they, the government actually came in and filled in some of those spots because people were coming in through these openings in the wall, and they were getting into the agriculture fields. Sometimes they'd get in there and sleep at night and everything, well, sometimes they would do their business in the field. And if that was found in the field, then that farmer, the government made them plow those fields completely under. And that, that's, I think 90% of the lettuce crop from this time of year comes from that area, and they're talking about it being slight this year just because they've had so many crops that had to be plowed under. They have fixed those gaps in the wall, and basically what it's done, it's shifted things further towards San Diego area. So yeah, they're having a, they're having a hard time with it over there. We did tour one of the processing facilities over there. They've got a thousand-person processing center, you know, the tent processing kind like we got down in El Paso. That one down there is a 2,500 person, this one's 1,000. It's quite a process. I think the thing that concerned me the most is they're paying $500,000 a day to keep that processing center open. And out of the seven processing centers there are in the United States, they pay $4 million a day to keep these processing centers open and running. So, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money, a lot of money. So it was interesting just to see their problems, you know, what they're dealing with there versus, you know, McAllen was the same issue, just different circumstances. So, but it was, it was a good meeting. We had sheriffs from all over the southwest border, we had them from New York, we had them from Ohio, we had some from Michigan, because not only do we have problems down here, it's hitting up there also. So they come down to talk with the border sheriffs and see what, you know, what's going on, what, how can they help, you know? So it was, it was a good meeting, educated a lot of people on it. Border Patrol was there with a lot of their people and briefed us on, you know, their numbers and all this stuff. So very informal, informational, and it was, it was a good time, other than the heat. I'm not used to that heat.
Anything else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is John here, Barney? Oh, you are, okay. Good morning.
Good morning. Good morning, Commissioners. Hilton Chapman, Deputy Director over at Tularosa Basin Regional Dispatch Authority. For the month of August, we did about 2,800 For the month of August, we did about twenty-eight hundred nine-one-one calls, thirteen hundred officer line calls, and about ninety-eight hundred admin lines, and a total of about fourteen thousand total calls into the center of the month of August. Right now, we have three traveling dispatchers that we got from all over the US that are here with us now, helping us out, until we get our staffing up a little bit. They have been able to help us greatly right now, especially when it comes to training. We've had a bunch of telecommunications kinda at a standstill on training, just due to us not having staffing up at a decent level to be able to dedicate one dispatcher to that person, to four, you know, other channels, so that's been helpful for us. One of them's away right now, because she's actually talking about moving her mom here and staying here with us after her contract is up with us, so we got that, looking forward to, of having that body as well, in the six months, once they're done here with us. Right now Barney's up at Rialdo, so he's at the Affiliates Directors Conference right now for us, so we're kinda tag teaming that. They're pretty much the liaison for us to the state to get anything approved through DFA and so on. Last month, we had three members go to the National App Co. Conference in Florida, so Barney and Emilio, we took one, or they took one other dispatcher there for us, and that's pretty helpful for us, because we get to see a lot of the national changes for the standards when it comes to fire, EMS, and law. So bringing back a lot of that good information does help us out, especially with us staying up to date with what's going on around America. We just started our Carbine kickoff, so Carbine is a cloud-based call handling system, so we're moving away from Motorola Call Works to this system, and it offers a lot more features than Call Works, so. Anything, anytime, I mean, you guys probably already know, anytime we wanna do anything with Motorola, there's a price tag with it, there's, you know, thousands of dollars just to add, very basic things that most other call handling system have. And one big thing that we like is call triage, and call triage pretty much is, if there is an accident or any major incident, it'll allow the one person to call in, and any other, it's a geo-located, so any other individual that calls in from that same location, it's an automated answer that says, hey, is it in relations to this specific incident? If they say yes, then it puts them in a queue, so it's not tying up nine-one-one lines, and if they select no, then it'll let them in through the nine-one-one system as any other caller would. It also has live translation, so right now, everyone knows that we do have a large Spanish-speaking population, and right now, in order for us to take those calls, we only have two dispatchers that can speak Spanish fluently. We also have language line and voyance, there's two systems that, well, one of them the state pays for, the other one we have to pay for. But with that, with that program with Carbine, it allows for real-time translation without needing a third person to handle that call for us. It also transcribes it, so if the caller does miss something, we have that log right there, so that we can make sure we're updating the notes properly for any other first responders. Last month, we also had two of our members instruct the advert class for the county, which was helpful, we've got a lot of positive feedback for that, from that, so we're looking at possibly continuously doing that as well. We had AFD do a walkthrough of the PSC, so pretty much AFD hasn't come over until this point really to sit down and learn the, the radio system, kinda what's going on in the nine-one-one center. So we had that opportunity last month to give them a full tour, Barney sat down with them, explained the radios from beginning to end, how we're dispatching them, so if they did have any additional questions or anything that they wanted to change with how we're, we're operating with them, they had the time to do so. We just went live with our countywide alerting system, Genesis, so we moved away from Smart, Smart nine-one-one to this, uh, Genesis, and it does another system that provides a lot of good benefits for the county when it comes to that system. You guys probably already seen, we went live with our nine-one-one dispatch video. That's something that we're looking at doing consistently, creating videos with all of our agencies, so first responders, AFD, you know, the APD Sheriff's Office, and a lot of the county fire and EMS units, just incorporating them, so when people ask who Otero County is, they kinda see, they have a video to kinda walk them through exactly who we are and what we do here in, in our county. And lastly, so we have currently for vacant positions, we have one daytime supervisor position available, and then we have six dispatcher positions, but some of those are being filled up, we just did interviews, I wanna say three weeks ago, we just had interviews for our training coordinator, training QA specialist, and our IT position, and like I said, for multiple telecommunicative positions. So those numbers will go down here shortly, once we can sit down and, you know, look over, grade the, the interview, grade the interviews and make our selections. We had three members graduate as well at the PST Academy last month, we had one of them receive class leader as well. They all, they all came back and said nothing but great things about the academy, so we're hoping that that kinda, you know, pushes them along in training and help out with, once again, that stagnant training that we've had, just due to not having enough bodies on the floor. Let's see. That's all we have on our end, unless there's any questions from any of you.
Are you gonna stay here for those agenda items?
Yes ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Anything?
No, I'm good.
All right.
Thank you. Good morning Commissioners, Matt Clark, Emergency Services Director.
Good morning.
Relocated my, my eyeballs. For August, codes addressed three solid waste, one illegal dumping, open burns, and vehicle complaints. Our office ran sixteen fire and sixteen EMS calls, assisting the volunteers. We did a pre-plan under fire inspections. We have one case in court, it's, I believe that's the Mike, Mike Court down in Chaparral still. We opened fifteen new cases, did thirty-six follow-ups, closed nine, and we did one fire Twenty-one quail trail has made significant improvements over the last two weeks. Yes.
Wasn't expecting that.
Uh, we weren't either, the guy's really cleaning up his property and moving forward, which is good, and we're keeping an eye on it to make sure that it continues in that Eighty Second Street, I will let you know when we go ahead and burn that one. Just let, having the things calm down a little bit, we've been really busy for the month, but we'll get that one taken care of as well. Mike Court was filed, and the property owner did not show up to court, so that's why it still shows in court. Seventeen Glen is scheduled for cleanup on September twentieth with Thrive, along with Tractor, White Oaks, fifteen bowls, and I think there's one more, but the partnership with Thrive, I think, is going to be a wonderful thing for the county to help out with some of these cases. So we're, we're excited for that and looking forward to that happening. The Slash Pit is still open, we had a hundred and fifty-five loads come in and eight loads go out. The residents are taking it seriously and cleaning up their properties up there and trying to make them safer to the best of their abilities. The volunteers responded to two hundred and thirty-nine calls for the month of August, fifteen of them were fires, a hundred and fifty-nine EMS-related. They do good work, we appreciate everything that they, they do for us and the residents of Otero County. And I'm sure there's calls that go unanswered, and we're working on trying to mitigate that best that we can. We did the Heritage Day in August, sat out there with our EMS unit to provide first aid, anyone that wanted to go through it had the ability to, and then also as a recruiting tool, we had our, our tent up, passing out flyers, like we do at all those events that we get to. So with that, any questions?
Yeah, I have one. You're not gonna like it. This, this cleanup deal, First Street, Bowls Acres, it's ridiculous, it's getting worse. Now they're stacking up cars on the other side of the road. I don't know what's happening, well, I do know what's happening, nothing's happening. This is getting old, it's been years and years and years. I understand with the legal situation, but this county can't keep going like this. They know, they don't have to clean anything up, cause no, nothing will happen to them.
So, we've hit another roadblock, and we have gone into e-filing with the courts now. We do not have a court ID number. I called the Supreme Court, I can't get one. So, I don't know how the deputies are doing it for their e-file, but I can't get one. So we are working to try to figure out how to get that. We've hit so many roadblocks through this that we're trying to fight through, that is causing this stuff to go prolonged. I don't know why code enforcement was ever taken from the sheriff's office, but that's the roadblock that it's been. We, to make this happen, and that takes time. So I understand that you're frustrated and it gets old, but it's not because we're not trying.
So you're telling me it needs to go back to the sheriff's department?
If you want it done a lot faster than I can do it, that's what's gonna have to happen.
This is years on some of these deals.
And I'm doing it, and I'm doing it by myself. I'm standing alone, trying to make this happen.
RB, what's, what's the holdup?
It's, it's one thing after another, Jacob said, like, we get, we get rolling on something, and then there's new red tape. The courts just moved over, the magistrate courts got on the e-file system that everyone, the district courts are on, which should make everything easier, but there's no consideration or system in place to account for code enforcement. And we do need to find out how the sheriff's department is accomplishing it, cause I'm pretty sure they, I, I, I'm assuming they're still having to file them paper-wise, and if they're doing that, then we can do that, but it's just a matter of figuring that out. Is this on First Street, is this one of the ones that we're gonna get in two weeks, or is this a separate one?
No, he's, he's signed the paperwork.
He did sign the paperwork. Okay, so we're gonna get it taken care of next week, next Friday.
Who signed the paperwork?
The property owner.
Okay, so what, what are we?
We're just gonna go in and get rid of the shit, cause, like you said, this is taking years, and there's bureaucratic red tape, and with the day of giving your hope, whatever it's called, volunteers are gonna go out and clean up the community, and because that is going, we can partner with them, we can get around the anti-donation clause, and go take a loader in, scoop it up, put it in the dumpster, and get it to the landfill.
You better have a whole parade of dumpsters out there.
It's gonna be, it's gonna be a busy day.
But, I'd like to know when that is, if I can participate, I will. So what about the Florida Street addition? We have a lady back here in the back that I'm sure that she's wanting to know what's happening on that.
We're referring them to the city, because it's city property. They did all their paperwork to make it theirs, and I don't know what we can do on our side to make them do it any faster, from, from the county to the city, I don't know how that, I don't know how we can make that happen.
Um, Jacob, don't take me wrong, but this is getting very frustrating, the citizens of Otero County are getting sick of it, and, and they hear the same thing, well, it's, it's tied up on here, it's tied up on here. We, we gotta figure something out. This is not working.
No, I agree, I agree, and I've been preaching that for a long time, but it's not for lack of trying, and that's what the citizens need to understand, is I am working as hard as I possibly can to make this work. We started from absolutely nothing, so it's, it's been five, almost six years that I've been able to build it to where it is now, where we weren't doing anything. There was, code enforcement was pretty much nonexistent when we took it over. So we're, we're moving forward, it's just not, not very fast, and, and I can't speed that up as much as I want to, as hard as I can try, it's just one thing after the next. I know it's old, but there, there's nothing else I can say, that's exactly what's happening.
Well, maybe when this is over, maybe you and Sheriff Black and RB and I can sit down. If it needs to go back to the sheriff's department, I'll bring it up and we'll put it on the agenda. I know Sheriff Black doesn't want that, he's got enough on his hands, but something's gotta happen.
I agree, I agree.
So I had a conversation with Sheriff Black and RB probably five months ago about the exact same thing, about the sheriff's department moving this over. I had a meeting with Sheriff Black and Under Sheriff Jett at that time, and what it would take to move him back over. And one was tightening up of our ordinances, that that is an absolute must before the sheriff's department can, so it's actually prosecutable through them. And we're just not working on the ordinances, and then budget, they wanted, I think there was five officers with five cars is what we would need. So I had actually put a goal of, for the next budget season, to have the ordinance done and be able to accept that to move it all over by that time, but the county moves as slow as molasses, so it might happen the next twenty years, but that's, I did have that conversation, and I'm on board with doing the exact same thing, but we have to make stricter ordinances in order for David to accept it.
Well, even, even on our side, the ordinance don't have a lot of teeth, and that needs to get fixed, regardless of which side, whether it stays with my office or moves over to the sheriff's office, the ordinance have to get fixed.
Uh huh. And, and I'm working on changing the ordinances, but as far as teeth, like, your teeth are ninety days in jail or a three hundred dollar fine, and a judge is gonna be hard-pressed to put anyone in jail for having a messy yard. It will be, have to be pretty egregious, but when jail is on the table, then that triggers the right to a jury trial and a right to a public defender, and ninety-eight percent of the offenders, so to speak, are gonna qualify for a public defender. So then we're looking at a five to six month process to get it through court, and just a bunch of annoying hoops and hurdles. If we change it to where it's like first, second offense, jail time is not on the table, then public defender is not, they don't have a right to one, and we're taking it from six months to a one-month process. It's gonna be a three hundred dollar fine, but three hundred dollars is not insignificant these days, and when that's not paid, or they don't show up to court, at that point, a warrant would go out, and then jail would, would be in the picture.
Well, then I got a suggestion then, why don't we take this garbage that we're gonna pick up at Bowls Acres and dump it across the street from the judge's house and let him look at it for three, four years? Like, these residents out here in Bowls Acres are looking at this every day, and then maybe something will get going a little faster. I mean, it's, it's ridiculous. Yeah, I'm sorry. Jacob, don't take this personally, it's not, I've just had enough. I drove out there again the other day, and I'm like, I just kept fuming. I wanted to come and stop at his office, and, and I'm like, nope, back off, cool off. It's ridiculous.
And then tractor, you know, I, I ran into Matt a couple of weeks ago, it's piles and piles of what looks like paper from a distance, but I think it's close, and I mean like acre full of it. And I ran into that property owner in Rialdo, so, and they had a U-Haul truck, and they were picking up more clothes to take. And I'm like, how do you stop that? We're gonna use all of our resources and clean up their property, and they're gonna go, and they're gonna pick up more and, and do the same thing. So, what are we gonna do to have intervention? We clean up this property and say, no more?
Are these clothes from the relief effort, fires?
I would assume so, but I didn't ask that, I didn't wanna have a conversation with them, cause that was just me passing by, and I said, hey, what are you guys doing up here? And she said, we're picking up clothes. So I don't know that, but I know they're going to waste, I do know that. But, I know they're going to waste, I do know that. 'Cause it's, you can't tell that they're clothes. It's trash.
And what's the point? You know, I mean?
I don't.
It's, it's probably mental illness, but I mean, there is no point. It's, it's not sane, it's just...
And these piles are five foot tall. I mean, it's ridiculous.
It is ridiculous.
But, how, so we, what are we gonna do? We're gonna use, and I'll go help clean up on the 20th at that particular property? And, um, on the 21st, if I see a new pile of clothes, I'm gonna lose my lid.
That's all I have.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, Tom Porter, Otero County Road Department.
Good morning.
So, for the month of August, we had four major rain events that we ended up dealing with flooding on the, this side of the county. Caused major damage to Chapel Road up there by Three Rivers, Three Rivers Road, Round Mountain Road, Bent Road, Rattlesnake Road, Diablo, Timberon area and Sabanat. We had to do a lot of repair on all of those. We're working on finishing up Mountain Meadows, getting it patched for the final chip seal for this season. We had to do culvert repairs on Owen Prather, 506, Gang Diablo, F-052, F-001. Uh, we hauled material on Owen Prather, Chaparral Road, Mountain Meadows, Sabanat, Timberon, Heather Lane and Three Rivers. We did patching in 16 Springs, Timberon and as I said, Mountain Meadows and the Chaparral area. Our mowing is going throughout the county. We had a small Gavion project we had to do on Riada 'cause we were fixing to lose a section of road over there that was washing out.
Lot of flooding.
Yeah, a little bit.
I've been in and out.
I know they're working on some water projects up in Haynes Canyon and they've kinda took, taken out part of our road. Have you been up there to see that?
Yes, I have.
Are they gonna fix our road?
They're supposed to be.
They better.
I've already had a phone call.
Yeah.
Um, Laloos Canyon, did that bridge hold up okay? That, uh?
So far.
Okay, good.
Uh, Tim Carroll and I went and looked at that the other day and so far it's holding up. Uh, there is a little bit of washout on the downstream end. And, I told him about it. He was supposed to be getting a crew in there to build a berm to divert the water just to the north of that, so it's not going out there anymore.
And the, the only complaint, well, other than the flooding stuff, the only other off-subject complaint is you're not mowing the grass short enough.
Okay. The mowers have gotta set height.
I'm just, just passing it along.
I actually got a phone call from one of your neighbors yesterday, about that big ditch where all the weeds are growing in there. And, we've gotta wait for it to dry out before I can get in there, so.
My neighbors are abused, I don't even put my, my area on the marker. I know.
The rain comes the weeds in the grass. Anything else?
No.
That's part of the road.
Again, I've gotta wait for that one to dry out so I can get in there too.
It's been a long time.
Make sure you do Gwynn's weeds nice and short. Nice and short on Gwynn's weeds.
Yeah, they're, they're still a foot tall. It's as short as we can get them.
Thanks, Tom.
Good morning, commissioners, Trent Parker, Project Manager.
Good morning.
First off, we got Chin's Phase Three, we're processing the final pay application for that. It's Phase Three of it's complete. Phase Four, the roof replacement that we got legislative funds for, we're already working on the, updating the design and bid documents so that we can get back going on getting that roof put on and hoping to be started by the end of the year with that process. Trying to push it along at a more rapid pace. The road shop building, we had some, the underground plumbing installed, septic systems going in for the restrooms and we're currently pricing the framing and finished work for the offices and restrooms to try to get that worked out so that facilities can get moved into their new building and, and trucking. Fairgrounds, the, we have an in-person training tomorrow for the video and surveillance and PA system. Affairs coming up soon, so, we're trying to get them to where they can operate that equipment and, and be able to utilize it during fairtime. The Dungen Fire Station, we had completed it, but, uh, we went in and, and did some additional pricing and contracted to do some concrete apron on the building and some additional dirt work and gravel work to try to improve their approach into the building. That should be complete this week as well. Hyroll's Volunteer Fire Department expansion, they, this month, they were, uh, finished the retaining wall for the new addition. And, they built the pad and dug the footings and now we're just waiting. It's all formed up and we're waiting for the CID inspection so that we can place concrete hopefully beginning next week. After that, that, that one should be complete pretty rapidly. It's just a two-bay addition, so it'll go along pretty smooth. 16 Springs Water Storage Tank, the crew arrived this week and the tank is going up as we speak. And, they're hoping in two weeks to have that process complete. And, so I've got the plumber scheduled to follow them, uh, doing the tie-ins and, and try to get that one wrapped up. The James Canyon and Upper Cox, which is all under one department, we're doing the pump houses. And, so I'm pricing out the, the pads and pump houses for that so that we can get those. The plumbing at Upper Cox is complete and they're currently working on the one at Cloud Country West. So, we should be getting those wrapped up within a month as well. The Treasurer's Office remodel, we had, have that complete other than they changed how they wanted to do some layouts. So, we had to, were a different piece of glass for the service window. We're expecting that, uh, within a week or so and so that'll have them wrapped up. And, other than that, we have just some smaller studies and projects that we're pricing out and doing so, for upcoming projects. That's about it.
I'm busy, as always.
On the consent agenda, um, to discuss the property, the old Dungen Fire Station, is that to be demolished or sold?
I haven't had anything to do with that.
Pamela told me, I asked the same question. Pamela told me that it was supposed to be salvaged out if anybody tried to make a little bid upon it. They put it out for salvage rights if somebody wanted to get on it or whatever, for the material scrap on it.
So, we're keeping the land, we just wanna get rid of the building?
No.
Okay. And with this consent item, um, I guess it moves forward where it's gonna be, either they're gonna pay for, for the, the items on the property or we're gonna be disposing, paying to dispose the property?
That building's in pretty, pretty sad shape.
This is really bad.
They definitely got their use out of that one.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good morning, commissioners, Nina Sisler, Correctional Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning. So, our average, average population in August was 177. Um, our total, total population today is 169. In-house population, 140. We have 123 males, 18 females, 10 at the Otero prison, one in husband, excuse me, seven on treatment purlores, four out-of-county courts, three at Lincoln County 'cause they have full charges with our facility in there. And, we brought back two from Husbands County as well. We had eight juveniles. Now, we're down to four. We have three at Donna Anna County and one in Burno Leo. Video courts and facility, we had 42 municipal court, 105 magistrate court, 105 district court. Out-of-county courts, we have 14. And in-person courts for district court, we had eight. Magistrate, we had 12. As far as, um, my staffing, I have one that should be starting as soon as his notice is done where he works right now. So, it'll leave me down to nine full-time detention officers. Uh, my part-time position is filled and my front office is full. And, so, okay. So, hopefully we get some more applications. Department of Corrections, we transported five males to the Central New Mexico Correctional Facility in Muslunet. We had one female, um, transported to Western Correctional Facility in Grants, New Mexico. And, we transported two to Darren's Place for treatment and one to New Mexico Wellness in Rio Rancho and one, another one, I think it was Espanola. And that, that's it, I'm happy for you. Any questions?
Sounds like you're moving forward out there.
Trying.
So, you've only got nine openings right now?
For detention officers, yes.
That's amazing. I mean, that went from 30 something to nine, that's, that's great. How's the new addition working out?
It's there.
A lot more space.
It'll get there, yeah, they'll open.
Getting the keys worked out?
The medical area does, it is very beneficial because a lot of people that come in with chronic health issues or acute health issues. So, it does benefit the medical department definitely. So, and hopefully as staffing gets better, then we'll start opening areas.
So, did we get the issue with the locks solved? Or, we still have fighting locks, door locks?
The day we were out there, you were having a hard time.
Yeah, no, it's, they're fixing them. And we have a guy that comes every six months to, uh, check the locks. He works in prisons and jails and he travels throughout the United States. And so, every six months, we do have contracts with him and he'll, yeah, that's good. That's good now.
Okay, good, alright. Anything? Thank you.
Thank you.
I didn't see anybody from the Forest Service. I don't think we had anybody today.
I'll do their report.
Okay.
So, Ron was extremely helpful in getting easements for the power lines for the co-op company. And had it all the way to where they would have 100 feet on each side of easement so that they could go in and clean the tree lines that are possibilities of falling onto the power lines, not the short trees or anything like that. And, I guess it got cut off at the last minute. And, so, they have denied access to those easements. And, that's what I was gonna question them on today. Uh, because that alone could start a fire for a cloud craft.
Oh, yeah.
And, I don't understand why that was pulled. Everything was done and approved and it was our new district manager, Jason, that told it at the very last minute. So, I think that's something that we need to look into and, and help. I do know that they have a meeting, um, in Cloud Craft to discuss this on the 25th that I'm gonna be attending as well. But, that needs to be our priority to clean those easement lines to make sure trees don't fall, fall on the power lines.
I bet the reason why he's not here, he probably still thinks tomorrow.
We did send out an email though, to media.
He, he did get one, okay.
And I don't know if they have to do like a environmental assessment on that kinda stuff? That could, that pulls stuff up like crazy.
Apparently, everything was done. They were ready to start song. So...
I'd like to find out too, why, why that's bad. Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Number one, request approval of accounts payable, bills list, VL5, VL6, VL7, VL7A, VL8, VL9, VL9A. Number two, request approval of healthcare assistance claims and disposition claims for September 2024. Request approval of property liens for reimbursement of unclaimed decident, decident disposition services for September 2024. Request approval of August 8th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Request of, or number five, request approval of July 25th, 2024 regular meeting minutes. Number six, request approval of July 30th, 2024 special meeting minutes. Number seven, request approval to award RFP 24-021, veterinary services, a one-year contract with the option to renew for three more years. Number eight, request approval to award RFP 25-001, on-call demolition services, a one-year contract with the option to renew for three more years. Number nine, request approval to award bid 25-002, fire hose and ground, ground ladder testing as a multi-award con, contract to Sharp Testing Services Incorporated and High Plains Fire Services LLC. Number 10, request approval of a grant agreement between Otero County and the State of New Mexico for a broadband planning grant in the amount of $100,000. Number 11, request approval of a memorandum of understanding between Otero County and Cloud Craft Police Department for the purpose of providing enhanced law enforcement services. Number 12, request approval of a memorandum of understanding between Otero County and Almagorda Police Department for the purpose of providing enhanced law enforcement services. Number 13, request approval of an intergovernmental ag, agreement between the Otero County Sheriff's Office and the 12th Judicial District Attorney's Office. Number 14, request approval of a grant agreement between Otero County and the Department of Finance and Administration in the amount of $525,000 for the Corrections Recruitment Fund. Number 15, request approval of a renewal of an agreement between Otero County and Vital Core Health Strategies LLC. Number 16, request approval of a memorandum of understanding between Healthcred Care Insurance Services and the Otero County Detention Center. Number 17, request approval of disposition of property and building on 6 Basset Street, Almagorda, New Mexico, Dungen Volunteer Fire Station. Number 18, request approval to, to purchase a Greedall crossover hydraulic excavator in the amount of $365,036.80 for the Otero County ditch crew. Number 19, request approval of an agreement between Christus Southern New Mexico and Otero County for medical services for the Otero County Detention Center. Get a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You have any unscheduled? Okay. Okay, thank you. Okay. Evan Lambert?
Adi, adi, everyone. Good morning, my name is Evan Lambert. Just have a few comments to make here today. One of them is in regards to Sheriff Black making the comment. I wanna say thank you, Sheriff Black, if you're still in here, for, for addressing the, the incident involving, uh, the sheriff's deputies shooting of Elijah Hatley. Um, that 17-year-old boy was shot upwards and 19 times. Um, I'm looking forward to seeing what changes in policy, training, hiring of the future deputies and transparency will be enacted to ensure that this never happens again. So, please continue to work with, um, our dear commission here as well as our community and our county attorney to, uh, make whatever adjustments are required for that. Secondly, uh, as for the Corrections Department and Nina, I would say it's all, it's all great, I don't know if she's even here, but I would like to see better food, it doesn't taste very good. That's a joke. Uh, and thirdly, um, I would like to, uh, announce the success of the Southeast New Mexico Food and Housing Summit. As we all know, uh, we do live in a fairly impoverished area here. Uh, we have food insecurity, housing insecurity. I think it's around 26% of our homes are vacant. Uh, it was a wild success, we had hundreds of people show up, tons of different organizations. Our sister organization up in Chavez County just secured a $500,000 grant to rehabilitate vacant homes and turn them into affordable housing. That's a major win, right? Um, and then our organizations here, we run countywide, uh, public gardens that are free to harvest for the community, volunteer run. Anybody can just walk up, pick their veggies for dinner, right? That genuinely helps people, especially out in Chulita. The excess harvest that is harvested there also gets sold to the state for the food pantry. So, there's fresh veggies coming from our community and our people and our labor to help address that. Um, we also run public tool libraries countywide, materials bank countywide, educational programs for at-risk youth, teaching them trades. Um, I'm really, really, really proud of our community. Secondly, uh, we did have Congressman Gabe Vasquez show up as well as, uh, candidate Ashley Myers show up to, uh, participate in a candidate forum. We did have every single congressional district candidate invited. We did have every single congressional district candidate invited. Those are the only two that showed up. That was a bit disappointing. I was glad that they did show up, but I would have really appreciated it if John Block and Avette Harold had showed up too, because these are very pressing issues to our community. See, other than that, oh, yeah, a hundred percent, Otero and Chavez were there. And I know Amy Barelli, you've been involved with working out something to address the affordable housing issue out here. And I want to commend you on that and also with anything that y'all have been doing with that as well. It's very important to our community. And again, I just want to say thank you to everybody for your time today as well. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sheri Moore?
Not done this before, but I thank you commissioners for allowing me, as a community member of Otero County and the president of the La Luz Mutual Domestic Water Consumer Association. The subjects I would like to cover deal with flooding, culverts, road erosion, speeding, mowing, and fire station. I'm bringing these to you because I'm hoping that as we move on into the next month, some of these topics will become part of the agenda. So I'm giving you food for thought. In flooding, a bar ditch needs to be placed from section road south on east side of La Luz Road to keep heavy runoff from crossing over La Luz Road and flooding the alleys. I'm sure you're very well aware of every inch of Otero County. La Luz Road into La Luz is a main thoroughfare. And we, with these gully washers that we've been having, it has caused a lot of erosion, flooding. It's, it's not good because there's no way for the water to drain. It goes over the road and makes it hazardous. A culvert needs replaced at Benito Boulevard and La Luz Road. One end collapsed and the hole is beginning in the road. It's especially important, that's my road. Okay? I'm for the big, bigger good, but I'm with you. If, if my road's not working good, we got a problem. So on Benito, that's the last street to the left, and across the street is Valley View. And the water, as, as anyone knows, will go least of resistance. And it happens to go down our alleyway. And it's exposing our water lines. And there is no ditch to really move any water. There's no culvert across Valley View. And these are really big concerns, not just as a homeowner and a citizen, but as the president of the La Luz Water Department. Because we have invested a lot of money into a water system that is, is very well cared for. A bar ditch needs to be placed on the north side of Benito and Godbee Poplar intersection. The flood easement that is behind a house on Lakeside runs water to Valley View. This adds to the flooding water at the intersection of Benito Boulevard and La Luz Road, intersection by Valley View. The other thing that's important here that you may or may not know is that we're getting another Dollar General right at that corner.
I'm sorry, your, your time's up. Your timer's going off. It goes by fast.
All right. Thank you.
If you'd like to get more info to the commission and all of us, so we can look at those things, just send us an email. Everyone's cards are at the front, that you're going out.
And Tom's right there at the door.
And that culvert is going to be addressed next week? Okay. Okay, it's getting done.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I have a bucket list. This is my first time, so I appreciate your patience. I'll be ready next time.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was it on the sign and sheet. So we have some on.
Yes.
Zoom.
Were you able to hear me?
Yes.
Got it. Great. Thank you so much. Well, good morning. My name is Jorge Dominguez. I am a staff attorney at Las Americas Immigrant Advocacy Center. Today, I would like to speak on behalf of Las Americas about the Otero County Processing Center that is operated by M T C in Chaparral. Now first, let me state that Las Americas serves detained asylum seekers at the processing center. We engage with its staff. We enter the facility itself. We often hear allegations of abuse, harassment, and discrimination. However, those detained at the processing center have very little to no resources. They cannot take on a global corporation like M T C. I encourage all of you to search M T C lawsuits in Google and briefly look at the results. M T C has been sued many times throughout the country due to treatment that involved negligence, personal injury, and even torture during someone's detention. But it's not only detainees or ex-detainees who sue M T C. It's also former and current employees. On top of that, several states do business with M T C have investigated them for breach of contract and other fraudulent practices. Now, for example, just last year, exactly about a year ago, almost Mississippi recovered five million dollars from M T C because M T C understaffed a prison, but they were being paid as if they have the minimum mandatory staff. Now with that said, I encourage this board not to renew M T C's contract. I also encourage you to more closely scrutinize M T C's operation in Otero County. And finally, I'd like to leave you with this. How many employees at the processing center reside in Otero County? How many of them spend their income in the county or other parts of New Mexico? How many of them pay property taxes in Otero County? I encourage this board to answer these questions and see that doing business with M T C is not morally, legally, or even financially beneficial. Thank you for your time today.
Hello, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Hello, my name is Arastelli Fodestrapides, and I am a prior intern with the Las Americas Immigrant Advocacy Center. I represent noncitizens detained at the Otero County Processing Center. And today I would like to share with you a translated statement from one of our former clients who was detained there. I am a Colombian immigrant who was a detainee at the Otero County Processing Center. When I entered the United States, I was looking for protection. But from the moment I entered Otero County Processing Center, I was exposed to humiliation, as well as psychological and mental abuse. As I entered the facility with other Colombian women, an officer stated, "The Pablo Escovars have arrived." We felt judged because the actions of that man do not represent us. I remember an occasion where a few ladies had lice, and the guards would make us bathe our heads with poison which affected our health by causing headaches, hair loss, scalp damage, and skin damage. The food often smelled spoiled and would make us sick, but we only had two options: eat it or endure hunger. I provided the immigration officer with all the informations and requirements of three individuals who were willing to sponsor me, but he denied them. He would constantly deny my release, even when he knew I urgently needed medical treatment for a mass on my left breast. I spoke up about the harsh treatment he was making me endure, and it was, I'm, sorry. It was until then, and only then, that he gave me my release on a parole with a bail of one thousand five hundred dollars. When seeking psychological help, we would only get pills to dope us and to make us fall asleep. These pills were given with no regard for us developing a possible dependence. There are people who have been in there for nine months, two years, in detention who were not given their release. If they are not to be released, why can't they return to their country? Why are they being kept under torture for so long? We are not criminals and we are not bad people. We have a family. We have dreams and we want to live, to live in peace. But there are so many injustices that are being committed in Otero, Otero County Processing Center. Injustices that not even an animal should endure. Thank you so much for letting me share this testimony with you today.
There's like six of them. Or seven.
Hi.
Hello.
Okay. Hi, my name is Diana Nevares Yamires. I'm a legal assistant with Las Americas Immigrant Advocacy Center, and I assist non-citizens detained at Otero County Processing Center. I would like to share with you a translated statement from one of our former clients who was detained there. My name is Fabiola, and today I want to share my experience within the Otero County Processing Center from May twenty-second to August twenty-nine, twenty twenty-three. I can state many things about Otero, but I prefer to mention some adjectives that tell on their own what I need to express: humiliating, overwhelming, hopeless, unworthy, disappointing, and transgressive to the morality of human beings. Having said the above, I express myself before you to request a person that if you have the possibility in your hands, prevent others in the eyes of God from going through what I went through in those months. I hope they close these types of detention centers that only increase our anguish and despair, placing us in very dark places as human beings. I would wake up with a physical tightness in my chest that didn't let me breathe and filled me with fear. I felt malified as a person and developed a serious depression. No one listens to you. No one gives you help. No one explains anything to you. And no one knows you as more than a number you live in an individual space, and even in that space, they intimidate you. A place like that does not represent what the United States is. I know this because now I live outside of the detention center with respectful, kind, understanding, and humane people. When I was inside Otero, I always wondered if this was America was like. I feared what I would encounter out there. Thanks to those who do have values with other individuals, I understood that America is not how detention centers are run. From my experience, I would describe my stay at the detention center as traumatic and impossible to forget. Thank you for your time.
Hi.
Hello.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
My name is Alondra Leges. I am the Housing Partnerships Manager at the New Mexico Immigrant Law Center. I'm here to speak on behalf of a detainee at the Otero Processing Center. I'm going to read his translated statements below. So my name is Orlean Cantanero Miranda. I was a friend of John Javier Quintana. We were cellmates. Javier was a religious man, a preacher of the Bible. John died without a C F I, without the opportunity to tell his story. He suffered attacks in Ecuador and had to come to the United States. I saw when the doctors and nurses that were going to see John after he passed out, they were headed this way, but they were walking so slow as if it was not an emergency. John was working in the kitchen when he suddenly collapsed to the floor. As time passed, he defecated himself and passed away. He left in the worst way possible. Medical attention in the facility is not good. In March of this year, I was very depressed and all the facility did was sedate me and keep me separated and solitary from everyone else. They also punished us for no reason. They denied us food as a form of punishment. On August fifteenth of twenty twenty-four, guards threatened to take away our mattresses in retaliation for suspected misconduct. The guards later figured out none of us did anything and led us back into ourselves and let us keep our beds. But why would they take our beds? It isn't fair. I ask the government, please close this place.
I would also like to speak on behalf of the New Mexico Immigrant Law Center. I have had the opportunity to speak with numerous detainees at the Otero County Processing Center, and their stories are deeply troubling. They have shared accounts of inhumane treatment, denial of medical care, excessive punishment, and abuse of power by those tasked with their custody. This is not an issue of policy. It is an issue of humanity. I stand before you today to urge the termination of contracts with ICE that enable and perpetuate violence and dehumanization against migrants without our community, within our community. New Mexico thrives because of its rich diversity, and our future should not be built on the suffering of the most vulnerable. Our economy does not and should not depend on the deaths, despair, and suicides of detained migrants. We have an opportunity to stand on the right side of history by valuing human dignity over profit. I implore you to take decisive action to end these harmful practices. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello.
Hi, I'm Allegra Love. I'm an attorney at Las Americas Immigrant Advocacy Center. And I would like to read a testimony that was provided for us by a mother of someone who was detained at Otero County Processing Center. This is her testimony. I am a Venezuelan mother of a man who entered the Otero County Processing Center. Believing he was going to start his immigration process, he was surprised when asked to turn in all of his belongings, to take off his clothes and put on a prison uniform. He was not provided with an explanation as to what was happening and would get no answer from the immigration officers assigned to him. On his second court date, he was given his positive fear interview, but no further information was provided. Months and months passed. In these months, he was psychologically abused and humiliated by officers. On his third court date, he was asked again to contact his immigration officer to see what was going to happen, since Venezuela was not accepting deportees, but once again, no answer. Receiving beatings by the officers was also a usual thing. The officers know the range of the cameras. Therefore, they know the blind spots in these. Individuals were approached and would get beaten by them. In this detention center, there is racism, xenophobia, and mockery. I was told that officers would make individuals eat by the trash cans, stating that is where they deserve to eat. Officers would psychologically abuse the individuals by telling them that if they were released with an ankle monitor, they would be able to track them, and if they found them, they would take them back to prison. I've heard allegations of detention centers receiving money from the federal government. For each detainee, money more detainees equal greater profit. I believe investigations should take, take place in these types of institutions where officers do not respect professional ethics. If this institution is closed, I demand you make officers pay for the mistreatment of human beings. Officers tell individuals that they are not fit to be with U.S. citizens, but they are the ones who are not fit to deal with people who are looking for help and opportunity to move forward and to be able to help their families. Thank you.
Good morning, commission members. My name is Casey Mangen. I'm an attorney at the New Mexico Immigrant Law Center. I've been providing free legal services to individuals detained at the Otero County Processing Center for the last four years. In July, I informed the commission about the important conditions and due process violations at the detention center. I also informed the commission about how the detention center actually provides no economic benefits to the county. Today, I would like to update the commission that conditions at the processing center have not improved, and the county has continued to receive no economic benefits from the detention center. Recently, the detention center has failed to provide legal codes and is now charging people who came there to have any contact with the outside. ICE and M T C have remained unfazed and done nothing to remedy these blatant due process violations. As I warned in July, the processing center remains beyond repair. I also shared a U N A report from earlier this year that shows that unemployment rates in the county have increased since the facility opened and that salaries in the county have actually decreased since the facility opened. I would like to reiterate what Jorge Almudin too, in the U N A report, affirms, that Otero County residents are not working at the detention facility. It's probably because the starting salary of M T C or entry-level detention officer positions are slightly below the living wage. And that's for a single person with no children. Meanwhile, M T C may Meanwhile, MTC makes about $2 million a month in profits from Otero County Processing Center. Profits which remain with MTC, an out-of-state corporation, and don't even trickle down to the local economy. Simply put, Otero County residents deserve jobs that they actually want, that pay dignified wage and allow them to do dignified work. Otero County deserves better than MTC. We once again urge you to not allow the contract with ICE to be renewed in March of 2025. We can't allow ICE and a private corporation to profit off death and suffering of others in Otero County. Closure is the only way to protect people from further harm and safeguard a New Mexican value of respecting human rights. Furthermore, closure will have no economic drawbacks for the county. Thank you for your time and attention.
Hi, everyone. My name is Itzayana Banda. I'm the Communications Manager here at the New Mexico Dream Team, but I'm also the daughter of Jorge Banda, who was in the Otero Facility in 2012 and Maria's Benavides' main point of contact. Maria is John's Javier's Benavides sister. John Benavides passed away in the Otero Facility this year three months ago. After hearing about the terrible conditions at the Otero Facility, both then and now, I can't even begin to imagine what it was like for him. Imagine being punished simply because of your legal status. Even though the eventual deportation month of my father was tragic, after spending eight long months in that place, I was a little relieved that at least he was finally out of there. Whenever my father was allowed to call me, he would tell me about the horrible conditions inside the detention center. He was barely fed, slept on the floor, and most of the time, he didn't even have shoes. One day, he told me he was tired, tired of being in there, tired of being treated like he didn't matter. Hearing someone you love say that they don't matter is one of the most heartbreaking things. The next day, he told me he was going to accept his deportation instead of fighting his immigration case and staying with us, his family, because he just couldn't endure it anymore. My father is the strongest man I know, and hearing these words from him shattered me and my family. I can't even describe the trauma we went through. Talking to Maria and her family about what happened to John makes me even more upset. It's been 12 years, and yet, these places are still operating? How is this possible? Why is this place still allowed to exist? Maria shared with me that John's only wish was to create a better future for his children, his parents, and himself. While on custody, John would read the Bible to other inmates, always maintaining hope, saying that he'll be out soon. Maria also shared that her family still has no answers about what really happened. They know John had a medical condition that likely went untreated while he was detained. Can you imagine dying alone in a bathroom? Detained in a place without understanding why you were put there? My family, Maria, John's family, my community, and I urge you to take action. Close and end contracts at the Otero Facility. No New Mexican resident should live in fear of being detained in a federal immigration detention center, nor should a family have to witness their loved ones endure the horrors of such detention. No ICE and seekers should ever have to question why they are being placed in such a facility. As public servants, we call on you to stand by the values of our community. Together, we can build a New Mexico that doesn't try to encage vulnerable populations, but instead welcomes immigrants and ICE and seekers with dignity and compassion. Thank you.
Anyone else left that needs to speak?
Going once. Twice. All right, let's go.
Just real quick, I'd like to remind everybody to brush up on what it says on the statute of liberty. Most of us came here as immigrants, one way or another, and some of our families have the ability to come in and be documented, and some people don't have that ability. So, remember what we're supposed to stand on.
Okay, we'll move on to new business. Number 21, Request Approval of Resolution Number 9-11-24/113-09, Supporting the New Mexico County's 2025 Legislative Priorities. Every year, the New Mexico Board meets, and we kind of come up with the priorities that we think that would be good for us to fight for in the legislature. And so that's what this is. Do you guys have any questions on it?
When we went to the affiliate meeting for the commissioners, you said animal control is going to be on there. What happened?
It didn't get the votes. You have to, everybody gets so many votes. Well, you get one vote for each, you know, you get three votes, and you get to vote for what you think is a priority, and that didn't make the... Didn't make it. There were several things on there that were, they were all pretty good, but it's just what people voted on. And so we have to take the top vote-getting things.
Good.
Okay. Do I get a motion? Make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I don't like it, but I will.
Sorry.
Animal control.
I know.
I'll make a motion to accept our legislative priorities for the New Mexico Association of Counties.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 22, Request Approval of Resolution Number 9-11-24/113-10, Disposition of Personal Property and Fixed Assets in accordance with the state statute through GovDeals.com, an online auction service. And I know you usually abstain from these. I don't have any questions about it, do you?
No.
You want to make a motion, since it just does?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Request Approval Resolution Number 09-11-24/113-10, Disposition of Personal Property and Fixed Assets in accordance with the state statute through GovernmentDeal.com.
I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, number 23, Request Approval of Resolution Number 9-11-24/113-11, Expressing Otero County's Appreciation of Thrive's Annual Day of Caring and Commitment. Do you want to say anything?
Briefly, yes. So, and the Director of Thrive is here. If you guys have any questions for her on how it's going to go, but it's, they've been doing it for a long time. Before they were Thrive, they reunited away, but it just gives the community an opportunity to come together and help each other out and clean up problem areas or help fix things that people might not be able to fix. And typically, the county is not able to assist with such things because of the anti-dominion clause, but they are going to have at least 200 volunteers providing eight hours of volunteer service. And the average national volunteer rate that we can calculate that at, it comes out to a lot of money. And the amount of help that, and assistance that the county can provide on that day to make this as effective as possible will not come close to the amount that is being provided by the volunteers in terms of monetary value. So that allows us to help, and this is going to result in the, a bigger impact than, and faster impact than most other things that we can do.
I think it's a great idea. It's a tough day, the Friday of the fair, though. It's a tough, tough day for it.
So those that want to get involved and help, how do they do that? Can you come, is it okay?
Sure.
Right here. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
So, every volunteer must sign a waiver. We try to get all of the projects done by noon, usually because we have these amazing on-the-line code violations that we're adding to. We might go into the afternoon. We do understand there's other events going on in the, in the community that day, but we do try to get as many volunteers. Because we have these additional properties, there's going to be a mass request to the community for more volunteers. That's going out this afternoon, just because we want to be able to clean up these additional properties that we're working with the county staff to get done. And so anybody that will want to participate can fill out a waiver. It'll be on our website, on our Facebook page, at our office here in town. So we'll be able to come together and hopefully get all of these properties cleaned up.
All of them.
Every last, you know how I feel about, I'm very passionate about our, our community. So anything we can do to be able to clean these up. I mean, I went around with some of the staff and looked at some of these properties, and it's, I'm in shock, really. So I'm hoping we can get it all done.
So you sign, sign up, sign the waiver, and then you tell everybody whether, does it need to, whether meeting, or how's it going to work?
Yes, so we will, we have an opening ceremony Friday morning, the 20th, over at Grace Methodist Church in the parking lot. We have a commander from Holloman that will be there to thank. A lot of our volunteers are active men and women from Holloman. So, and then we have, I believe, Mayor Pro Tim Sharon McDonald will be there as well, representing the city. So we want to kind of gather everyone, thank them for their commitment to our community, and then we will disperse all of the volunteers. We have zone leaders that let most of the Holloman folks know where to go to start their cleanups. Most of the ones that we've gotten outside of the relationship with the county properties will be done by probably 10, 11 o'clock a.m., and then all of those folks will snowball into these county properties I'm calling, that I'm calling them. And so we should be able to knock it out in a day. So.
RB, the county can supply equipment or cannot? They can with this deal?
Okay. In my opinion, we can, based on, we can't do, we can't do things unless we are getting consideration or something of value in return. And the consideration that we're getting here is the volunteers that are doing work and addressing elements within the community that impact the health and welfare and safety of the community. It's no question that these piles of trash and clothes and whatnot are breeding grounds for hantavirus and bubonic plague and God knows what else, as well as being a detriment to our economic vitality. And a root cause of the majority of it is either mental health sickness or indigency. So I believe that we can use our equipment and resources on this day to do these things. Now, the rest of the year, we don't have volunteers coordinated doing all of this. This is what makes it unique and distinguishable.
So doing them on Fridays and Saturdays, whatever day these come in to, the operators of that equipment and stuff, that's their days off. How are we going, are they going to work them through volunteer, or the county will?
We will be paying them. We'll be compensating them. And we've already had a meeting with Ms. Hill and Ralph and Tom and Matt to plan and coordinate what resources are needed and how they'll be utilized.
That was good. Anything else?
That's it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay. I make a motion to request the approval of Resolution Number 9-11-24/113-11, expressing Otero County's appreciation of Thrive's annual day of caring and commitment.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Number 24, Discuss Keep Otero County Beautiful Ordinance, Number 23-03 Status.
So we passed that, I think it was either late last year or earlier this year, Commissioners, and in order to, to execute this program, we need a board. And so far, we've only had two applicants, and I believe that's for five spots?
I believe so.
Yeah, so, so we need at least three more. And normally, you could vet those, but right now, we're kind of at the begging spot. So I know a lot of people are concerned and like to complain, either to you via the telephone or online on social media. This is where rubber meets the road, and people can actually do something. So just putting it on the agenda to put the sales pitch out there. There, it's what people will make of this. There's opportunity to get connected to the National Keep America Beautiful Program and become an affiliate, and then there are grants that can be sought and efforts that can be organized. It's just, you know, it's, everyone at the county, like, has a lot of duties and obligations, and they're carrying them out the best they can. And this provides citizens an opportunity to help expand what can be done and what can be achieved. And so we just need three more people, and we can get this going and see where they take it.
I just want to reiterate that, so the perception is that we are forming this committee, and you're going to be out there picking up trash on the side of the road. While we want you to do that, yes, but the purpose of the committee is to organize and be able to get funding in order for us to help clean up the road. So this board decides, they identify areas, they identify funding, then they bring it to us and say, hey, we need a million dollars for this. And then, and I mean, so the process of the board isn't picking up the trash. It's making it happen. So please, 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 we need applicants for this board.
Is there anybody in the room?
Yeah, I would like to know how we go about, I would like to know how we go about applying for this. I know that I'm interested. I also have at least two more people for you, including a cost analyzer that works at White Sands Missile Range, who is also my organization's Chief Operations Officer for Otero County, Jacob Justice. We got myself. As we all know, I'm still actively involved, and we've actually adopted several parks through the Keep Allen and Gordon Beautiful Program. And the person that heads that up is also our grant writer from our organization. So I think that we have a good fit here, and I just want to know how I would go about applying so I can get that processed for myself and my associates here.
Okay, terrific. Do we have an application or does he email you?
No, they just email me a letter of interest.
Okay, I'll go ahead and grab a card on the way home. Thank you, guys.
You're welcome.
Okay, so I don't think we really need to vote on this.
There's no action, it's just discussion.
Just wanted to discuss, okay. Okay, number 25, Request Approval to Set Property Tax Rates for 2024 Property Tax Year.
Good morning, Commissioners. James Bowman, Otero County Assessor.
Good morning.
Morning. So yeah, everybody's favorite topic of discussion, tax rates. There we go. Yeah, so basically, I'm here to get our, we have our mill rates ready to go and get everything ready for tax bills for the 2024 season. I believe you guys should have the report that was sent out from DFA. And yeah, I mean, I'm here to answer any questions you guys may have about 2024 evaluations and things like that, and how I can try to help educate.
I want to thank you for spending probably an hour, hour and a half yesterday with me, because I had a lot of questions. And just so the people that are listening understand how you explain it to me, is we have neighboring properties with thousands of dollars of valuation difference. And the need for that to come up to an average, to make it a fair-based property assessment, it just makes sense to me. Also, this is going to raise taxes, which I always have a problem with. You know, your property value goes up, it's... You know, your property value goes up, it's, your taxes are going to go up. And this will help. In the end, you sell your house or anything like that, your value is going to be based a little better because of that. Also, as far as the county is concerned and that income base, on November's ballot, there's a question for veterans. And that question on the ballot is going to be veterans exemptions for property taxes based on their disability amount. And so if you're 100% disability, then you don't, disabled, then you don't owe, you won't pay any taxes, 10% or whatever. And that's going to put a big burden on you to figure that out. But, but that being said, I'm positive that is going to pass in November. And so that is going to be a loss of revenue for the county also. And so I don't see the county profiting any much more with that balance with this either. But, and then I asked the question, what if we vote no? Because I don't like taxes.
Right.
And you said that we are bound by statute to vote, kind of like certification of the elections, and we don't have any say. And I double-checked that, and that is absolutely true. This is just going through the motions and all that. So although I don't like it at all, I guess I'm voting for it. But I just want to put it on the record that I don't, I wish there was a gradual way that we could do it rather than next year's bill show up and it's going to be, you know, some people 50, some people 150. It's just going, it's going to be a pretty large increase, I think, on some.
Right. And just, and to clarify that too, I mean, I mean, I know you guys just recently too, I'm sure a lot of you got a lot of phone calls like, hey, I got this. I'm a business owner. I got a, you know, they're asking for income reports and things like that. I'm, I'll try to be more proactive with you guys because I do forget that you guys will get phone calls too. I mean, we get phone calls. But again, it's, I like, you know, I'll go on record to just kind of talk about it, you know. We send that out because we have three ways to value properties. Commercial is one of our toughest because we are a non-disclosure state, so we do not get sale prices on a lot of the commercial sales that happen in Otero County. So we have three ways to value properties. It's either going to be through your sale price, your comparable sales, or what we consider what's called cost approach. If we don't get sale prices, we don't get comparable sales. So realistically, that leaves us with one method of evaluation, which is the cost approach, which is how we probably do 90% of our commercial sales and our valuations for commercial. When we send out those letters, it's kind of just trying to say like, I get it. Everybody's like, I don't want to tell you because then my business might be more valuable and you guys might up my value. Well, again, the thing about it is, my office, all we want to do is be fair and consistent. You know, I am bound by statute to do things that are going to be for, you know, the betterment of the county. And also, but for me, it's like, is it fair? Is it right? That's what my job is. And I'm very transparent. Every person that I've talked to on the phone, I said, come into my office, we'll talk about it, we'll sit down, we'll have a discussion. I'm not, I'm not shying away from those conversations. And we do a lot of that during rendition time when we send out notice of values in April. I encourage everybody to come and see us. That's why I got on the radio this year and said, hey, you have questions about your notice of value, come see us. Because people don't open them. A lot of times they just throw it in the pile of mail and then when their tax bill comes out and they actually have to start paying, then they want to talk to us. And that's at the point in time where it's harder for us to make adjustments. So for those letters, I'll let you guys know next time. Like, we probably won't send it out again for maybe like another year or so. But we just do it so we can maybe find out, hey, is there some information that we can have to properly value this based off of another way of doing it, which is, you know, comparable sales or sales prices, things like that. Otherwise, we have to stick with the cost approach. But yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm an open book. You know, when it comes to the office, you know, what we do and everything, I want people to come and ask me questions because I like to try to educate people because it also helps me understand it a little bit better too. But yeah, I mean, it's definitely, and like you said, gradually, that is something that we are trying to do with commercial structures as well because we know that they've been undervalued for so long. And so, so for commercial, there is no cap rate. So I could take a value and I could look at it and say, hey, you've been valued at like $500,000, but you're actually probably should be in market value today, $1.5 million. Now, by statute, I could raise those non-commercial or those non-residential properties all the way up to market value, but we try to do it in a gradual form where it's like, hey, this year we might raise it by 20%, the next year it might be 40. And then we might, you know, continuously, so it's not right away, so you don't get that tax lightning right away. That's one way that we can try to help. But again, no, like, the way that I also have to explain to people is no one wants their value to be high until you're ready to sell, obviously, because then you're like, hey, this is what my property is valued at. And then, of course, everyone's like, hey, James, can you come and take a look at my property? Like, and as soon as they tell me, I made some improvements, like, you're getting ready to sell, aren't you? They're like, yeah, you know. So I'm like, okay, I get it. You know, I understand what that process is. But again, we just try to be fair and consistent. That's all we try to do. So again, I encourage, you know, like, yes, Amy came and sat down and, you know, this is to the rest of the commissioners and anybody else that's listening, you know. You have questions, come and talk to us. We're, we're here to help, here to educate and just trying to do things the best way we can.
I've had a couple call me. The big, the big hate, I would say, is their financials. They don't want to turn that over. They don't think that's anybody's business but their own, which in a way is, I kind of agree on. But so I've had to refer them, mostly I've been referring them to Ricardo, and he's been very good at explaining to them. So my phone's kind of quietened down a little bit on that, so hopefully they've got their questions answered on that.
Yeah, definitely. And like I said, I mean, we, we think about it in our office and we knew, okay, we'll get calls. But, you know, I honestly didn't think about, yeah, oh, they're going to call you guys too. But I know, like, I've communicated with Vicki with some of them. And then I know me and Amy spoke yesterday and things. So yeah, but anytime that that kind of stuff happens, just send them our way and we'll, we'll handle it as best we can.
And my answer was a little more rebellious when people called me.
It's like, you're right. That's, I don't understand what he's doing either. I get it. I understand, but that's okay. I mean, that's, that's one of the things that, you know, I had to be willing to accept, you know, you know, getting into this position is, you know, there's going to be some things that people disagree with. And, you know, again, I think the disagreements happen when you just don't actually have a conversation. And as long as you have the conversations, we can start finding ways to find the solution. So, yeah. But I guess I'll throw you guys some numbers just so you guys can kind of know what happened for Otero County over the last year. So from 2023 to 2024, we did see an increase in the overall valuation by 7.81%. We were, we only, we were about 100, we're 123 cells short of what we were last year as far as ownership changes and things like that. But it's actually still quite high. I mean, we had 1,014 cells this year, which is actually kind of high in a market that people think that the, like, real estate is actually dropping. We're actually staying kind of consistent right now. And we still have a few more months to go. So we actually expect that increase to go up because November and December are usually pretty high sell months for us that we get ownership changes in our office. So we're actually expecting that to increase before the end of the year. Permits, we did go up by 166 permits from last year to this year. Again, like I kind of talked about last year, where we are seeing an increase in like, you know, solar permits, things like that that are coming up. I don't know if you guys, you know, you probably see, oh, they're in Chaparral, it's booming right now. I can't tell you how many mobile homes have been actually brought new into the county over there. So we're, that's a constant, like, growth for us over there. So, and it's just going to continue to keep going. I think they're getting ready to, I think they just started breaking ground on their all subs out there. So that's just going to bring in even more, you know, I think, citizens and things like that are going to start moving out there. So it's going to continue growing. So we're just preparing for that and trying to get, you know, ready for that increase. Because my poor appraiser, you know, he's, he's constantly busy out there, but, you know, I tell him thank you every day because as soon as I got elected, I said, hey, guess what? You're taking Chaparral for me. Have fun. And he's enjoying it. I think he's brushing up on his Spanish and everything like that. He's, he's getting good at it. So, but, but yeah, no. We are, we are seeing an increase in evaluations, things like that, year to year right now. And I honestly just don't really see it slowing down.
And we're fixing to approve another subdivision in Chaparral. I was looking at them last night when I was down there. The one that are already established and built out with roads and streets, they're almost full.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's, it's a lot. So, you know, if you ever, if you guys ever have time, you want to go hold the tape measure for Dan, let us know. He'll, he'll take, he'll take you guys up for that. Because, I mean, I know kids use the help out there. But yeah, it's definitely growing out there for sure.
Yeah, that's real good.
Cool.
All right.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I make a motion to request approval to set property tax rate for 2024 property tax year.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. It was a sad eye. I heard it.
I know.
I don't think anybody ever likes that. Okay, number 26, request approval for two additional contracted dispatchers through GetRescue 911 in the amount of $120,000.
Good morning again.
Good morning. And I understand this is coming out of the dispatch budget already. It's not asking for more money.
Yes, ma'am. It is already factored in right now. And with those, the three that we already have, like I said, it just gets us to be able to start training with a few of our trainees that we have. With those six positions open, we have, like I said, we do have quite a few that we would like to hire, but there's no way we would be able to train anyone additional right now. And that's with myself, John Barney, and our operations manager all working the floor, coming in on weekends, helping out as well already. And we're just being able to staff the floor. So that's why we're hoping to get that approved, just like I said. It will help out a lot, especially getting that ball rolling for everyone else. So.
So a month or two ago, we approved hiring or going to a contract.
Yes, sir.
Two people at $50 an hour deal.
We got three.
Got three.
Was it three?
Yes, sir.
So where is that? Are you utilizing them?
Yes, sir. So they, they can't train. So right now, they're all working the floor. They're all working channels for us. We already got them kind of used to the county and the city side of most of the channels already. But like I said, we can't use them to train for us right now. We would have to get them sent to the ALCO class to get CTO certified. And if they do stay past their year mark, then we have to get them certified through the state. So there's a lot of other things that, for those traveling dispatchers, we'd have to get them certified to be able to teach in-house for us. And all of our CTOs already have trainees right now as well, so.
Questions? No? Any more questions?
Yeah, hang on just a second. So you're asking for the 120,000 on page one of your deal. It says, adjustments to weekly hours. Pay will be communicated in writing to the company once agreed by the client and contractor. Company will send adjusted invoices as necessary adjustments to weekly hour and overtime. Undertime will be coordinated by weekly between. So it could be more than this 120?
Yes, sir. So right now, that, that 120 is factored. If they only worked the 40 hours in a week, then that was it.
So what's the odds of them working overtime then?
If we get the other two in, it would drop that drastically because right now with myself, Barney, and Amelia also coming in and a lot of the shifts already filling in the days that they're off, if we could get those two, we would set them appropriately so that they have the coverage for those days that were already short-staffed. So like I said, right now, we have shifts that have two, yeah, two trainees on the shift that we have today. Having just one person there alone that wouldn't be overtime would help us out on that side. And then on the other day shift, the same thing. Because two of the three that we currently have are on nights. And we really don't, we haven't really had too much overtime on nights since those two have went to night tours.
So why are we not budgeting in a little bit of money for overtime use instead of coming in with you being over budget on this?
So we did, so from last year to this year, we did increase the overtime budget. But just staffing right now, like I said, we're just, everyone's just constantly doing overtime. Because we'll get two people trained, two people leave, or, you know, we'll play that game of, we'll get someone trained and others are leaving. And getting more people trained is just a lot of manpower because we have that individual that needs to be trained. And then we have to pull a CTO off of a channel to train them, especially when it's just call handling phase. So someone that is certified to handle a channel, we would have to take them off of that channel just so that they can help one person call take. And we can't use them for anything else at that point.
How many vacant positions do you have that we have budgeted but aren't paying out currently?
Six, yes, sir. But like I said, with those other, those interviews that we just did, we, we could fill three of those. But like I said, we just don't have the personnel to train them. They would be on our books and we'd be paying them for really not to train at all.
This is to hire in-house dispatchers.
No, ma'am. So that, this, the contract dispatcher, it would be just like the other three coming in from
They're traveling.
Other, yeah, the other travel dispatch.
They'll be sitting in our room dispatching. We're not going to call Korea and have dispatch out of Korea.
Yeah, those three ladies are the three that we got originally. Yeah, if you come over, Lisa, you can meet all three of them.
And we're not, we're not considering doing any third-party dispatch out of this area, no matter what, they're going to be in our office.
They will be here at 2351 Eddie Drive.
Okay.
Every single, or their scheduled days, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Because I see the improvement. We've had a lot of bumps and bruises through this process, and I mean a lot. I see it on this end and I see it on the receiving end. And the improvement of the dispatchers, the calmness, even I try to be calmer when I'm talking to them.
Good job.
They're so calm on the other side.
Yeah, we're working on it.
Everything, they're doing a great job. And I just don't want to lose, I don't want to lose what's gone. And the traveling, I look at this, like, traveling nurses, traveling dispatchers, I don't even know the concept of that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, but
It's a thing.
Yeah. If we could keep them here, that'd be even better, just like you said.
We try.
Wanting to stay. So that would be amazing.
Yeah, the one that wants to stay, she stays, it's a bar in the Minium or something like that over on Canyon Road, I think she said. And it's all for traveling nurses, the place that they're staying in. And she's, she's staying there right now. But she's like, so she's looking into renting a buying house here now, so.
Okay. That, I'd feel better that this is not a third-party thing.
No. Hey, anything else? All right. I make a motion to request approval for two additional contracted dispatchers through GetRescue 911 in the amount of $120,000.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Number 27, request approval for $340,000 for a new computer-aid dispatch SmartCop system.
Yes, so right now with the current CAD system that we have, Motorola, it has given us a ridiculous amount of deficiencies right now that we're either having to try to find integrations and buy more things to integrate with Flex. And that's the biggest, one of the biggest hurdles that we're coming into. Right now, pulling reports, working with the jail, the sheriff's office, APD, everyone is seeing, you know, a lot of the downfalls that this CAD system doesn't allow for us to do right now. And with the new SmartCop CAD system, it's completely cloud-based, so there would only be one thing in our back room. Unlike the Motorola's right now, at the end of life, you have to buy new servers, you have to update a bunch of things, which would put you over the price of this CAD system. And with the price for it right now, it would only be one year. It would be the first year after that. For all the agencies that are currently on the CAD system that we're using now, everyone would pitch in to cut that cost drastically down. If they do not want to join or come over to the new CAD system, that also would drop the price because right now it's budgeted for if every single agency that we have on the current CAD system rolls over to this one with us. And like I said, if they do not, then that drops the price as well for us. Like I said, so this is the highest that you will see it unless, like I said, we get people that do not want to be on that CAD system. Or more, then that would raise the price. But once again, we would bill those agencies accordingly for the additional price raise for that. Warrants is another huge thing that you probably hear all over the county, dealing with everyone right now. Whenever we want to input a warrant, we have to put it in the CAD system because it doesn't integrate with NCIC. Then we have to roll over and put it in NCIC as well. And unless there, unless you email someone saying, hey, there's this warrant in there, they won't get a notification. They don't get any heads up about that warrant. They just have to go in there and periodically check that system to verify that we do have warrants in there. Like I said, also it benefits with the jail or the detention center as well because I know they're rolling over to their new system. This new CAD system integrates fully with everything, what they want to do as well. So we're not having to buy anything additional for the detention side. I mean, I know everyone wrote letters as well for wanting to swap over to the new CAD system. So it will be very beneficial for us because, like I said, now we're not paying all the server maintenance or the physical server fees or anything like that. Because I know Motorola's current servers that we have in the back room, they're at end-of-life, I want to say the Fisher Sheriff or Yeah, so, or next year. So April is the end-of-life for the current service that we have. So we're going to need brand-new servers. We're going to have to expand that back room even more. So that's going to be a much larger chunk to get that done.
Does the city absorb any of these?
They would take some of that as well.
If everybody doesn't go onto the system though, is it going to work?
So it still will. So if everyone doesn't. So, it still will, so if everyone doesn't, we would still dispatch them like normally, they just wouldn't get the, all the information that they do now, because we're all on one system right now, on the Motorola Flex system.
So, I have a little bit of heartburn with this, because this system's a year old? Not quite?
For the SmartCop?
Well, for out-the-dispatch deal.
Well, so the system's been around for, we've had, we've been on contract with that system for a while, we, the, the new infrastructure just got put into the dispatch side, but the server side and the hardware, some of that has been already within the county.
So, why wasn't this researched to see that you weren't going to like it, it wasn't going to work then? Because we spent a lot of money.
Sorry, that's my keys, sorry.
A lot of money, and now you want to spend more, and this proposal I'm looking at over here has got spaced out for a one-year cost at over one million dollars.
Yes sir. So, with that, the, with the current CAD system that we have, that was purchased before Taberta was formed, and because the county was already on that system. So, everything that, I mean, if you come over to the dispatcher, and everything we have is Motorola right now. Every, I think it's just, everyone likes the name Motorola, that's my assumption, but, I mean, every day we have an issue with it, we literally just had them in yesterday, Monday, to come install new hard drives, because the call handling system kept going down. We'd constantly have issues with Motorola, their support ticket, their support side of things, we had one ticket in for almost six months before they even called us, emailed us, or did anything with that ticket.
Okay, I understand you got problems, why wasn't this evaluated before you put your system into place? I know that Emery with the Sheriff Department was in on this, Barney was in on this, you're taking the heat on this right now?
No, yes.
Which is not fair, but, I mean, that was a lot of money we spent.
I mean, I think overall, it was probably just lack of research in what we wanted here in the county.
Lack of research is not the county's problem on giving up this much money. That's y'all's problem. And so, you do this for a year, and all of a sudden, oh, I don't like it.
Well, so, we, from everything we've seen, everything we've heard, we've already talked to centers that's already used it in Florida, when we went to the MENA conference as well, and we have not heard any, the only complaint really, that we've heard from this system is that expanding it to other agencies can be challenging at times, just because now that's a whole new set of things you have to buy for the additional agencies. But, that's the only downfall that we've heard or seen when it comes to this SmartCop system.
So, does that mean, let's say, APD doesn't get on, and then six months from now, they decide they want to get on, then they have to buy some other assets to be able to get on?
Yeah, they would, they would just pay for the additional licensing, so like I said, they went on Mobile CAD, they would have to pay for those additional licenseings for themselves, but that would be all them at that point. Because, once again, like I said, they would just be paying for their part of the fees.
And you don't have the money in your budget for this?
Uh, no, no ma'am. I mean, well, no ma'am.
And Julianne, do we have the money?
For the three hundred and forty thousand, just so that I understand, is that amount the amount to be split between the county and the city, or is that the county's portion?
So, that's the total?
That's the total.
That is just the total for the first year?
Okay.
Like I said, we would split that up for all the agencies that would want to be on that, then like I said, that cost would go down for the county, and APD and everyone else wants to go on to join.
Number one, we do still have some salary savings in dispatch budget because of the positions that they haven't filled. If that is not enough to cover it, we do have enough money in our quarter percent hold harmless versus receipts tax that we could draw upon for this project.
Well, what's going to happen here, you're going to see the city, you'll see Cloudcroft or Turosa come in here, well, the county's already voted to pay for it, let them pay for it, we're not paying for it. I'm not playing the game yet, I'm sorry.
We're only paying for our portion of it, though, we're not paying for theirs.
Who's going to pay for the three forty?
That's the way that the MOU or the agreement is set up, that we don't pay one hundred percent of the costs.
Who's going to pay for the full three forty then?
That's the portion that's going to be split, and we would be billing for sure the city and whatever other agencies would be included in this. Right now, we do bill the city for their fifty percent portion quarterly, up to the maximum that they have approved, that the TBRTA board has approved for the budget, for the city's budget for the year.
I think it'd be a good idea to table this for now, until we find out who all wants to be on board with and who all's going to help pay for it, because I don't want the county to absorb all this, and I don't think the city has had discussion on this yet, so, I would like to table it for now, until we get more information. I don't, it's not a no, it's just not yet.
And maybe we could get the city to do the, some upfront comps that they agree to, it's a fifty-fifty. Are they paying on time and everything, all that's going good already?
As far as I know, Julianne?
I'm sorry, what?
The city and all the agencies we're partnered with, are they paying everything on time?
The only agency or the only entity we've been billing so far has been the city. I don't have anything from any other entities who were involved with dispatch to bill anyone else at this point, but the city, yes, they, they're, they've paid everything for last year, and I have not billed the first quarter yet. I'll do that once we finish September, so.
And Cloudcroft, I think should be billed?
Yes ma'am, Cloudcroft, and I know right now, we're working on MOUs with other agencies right now, we just need to get those approved to pay in for our services as well.
Okay.
Yeah, I still would like to table it until we get more information and see who all wants to be on board, and I don't like to piecemeal things, so if we're going to have everybody on board, we need to get them on board at the same time. So, that's, that's my two cents.
Well, I agree doing that, because otherwise, I'm voting against it.
Thirty days, you think?
Yes ma'am, I can, I can work with the city, and we can start figuring it out, because I know we have a board meeting here soon, so, as well, so.
So, you have a meeting Friday? And that'll be discussed then with the city, will they make a decision, or they're going to have to go back to their board, I'm sure?
Yes sir, yeah, so they'll have to go back, but I know Stephanie Hernandez normally kind of, you know, fills that gap right away, just at least gives us a yes or no, and then kind of goes back and verifies, but.
Because I don't think that's on the agenda for this Friday, so I don't know that can be discussed this Friday. So, so I make a motion to table this until, for, until our next meeting, thirty days, that gives us time? Because I don't think the city will have time to react much sooner than that, so.
The wheels of government move so fast.
I know, I know. All right. Do we need a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table this.
Right.
I'll take it.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number twenty-eight, discuss and consider whether or not Otero County should consolidate Otero County volunteer fire departments.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning again.
So, the end of July meeting, you asked to have us meet, come up with ideas, thoughts, and move forward. The chiefs during that time met three times where we had a large group, where we talked with, we had the state fire marshal there to answer any questions that they may have. The next one, we had fire chiefs from Valencia County and San Juan County who have gone through a consolidation and are in the process of going through one right now. Asked, the chiefs were allowed to ask questions, what concerns do they have, pros, cons, stuff like that. And then, at our association meeting, it came up again, where we had more discussion and looked at how the departments wanted to move forward. It is still a hundred percent voluntary, if a department wants to move towards consolidation, they absolutely can, if they don't, then they're not going to consolidate, they'll stay standalone, and it is what it is. I mean, if their department feels that strongly, and that's what they want to do, I support it. I know one of the concerns is, departments have spoken with insurance companies, and the insurance companies have told them they don't look at ISO as far as insurance goes for the homeowner, which is true, there are some insurance companies that use ISO, and there are others that do not use ISO. What we have is state statute that funds all of the volunteer fire departments, all the paid fire departments in New Mexico by state statute is funded based off of their ISO insurance rating. So, even if an insurance agent doesn't support it, the state says, this is how you're going to be funded. We fund based off of structure. Our area, unique, down the flats, we don't have as much issues with the forest fires like we do up in the wildland, up in the mountains. So, their insurance is totally different, understandable. But at the end of the day, it's the state fire marshal handing out the money to the departments to be structured firefighters first and foremost, and that's how they're funded. There are departments that want to go ahead and start doing a consolidation, there's departments that are still unsure, and they're still discussing it amongst their membership, amongst others, to determine if that's the direction that they want to go. As I presented in the agenda, the departments right now that are really looking at it, Alma West, Bull's Acres, Far South, and Oro Vista, Bent, Vero Flats, Donegan, Jackrabbit Flats, La Luz, James Canyon, Sixteen Springs, Mayhill, Sacramento Weed, Sunspot, and Timberon. High Rolls and Pinion are still unsure as to the directions they want to go. And that's understandable. Our next step, if the commission is going to support a consolidation, is actually drawing up resolutions, coming up with district lines for approval from the commission to send up to Santa Fe for their approval, and then we move forward with the consolidation. If departments don't want to do it, they have reservations about it, again, if they don't want to do it, they can stop and not do it. We haven't crossed that point of no return, if you will. I know one of the things that was brought up was the fact that there is no recruiting for volunteers. This is the county's webpage that, two years ago, we started, we had nothing on the county's webpage to show there is volunteer departments in the area and any of the information about it. So, we've put this on, it's been up for about two years now. Each department is a link, it goes and gives them information about their department, the times that they meet, contact information, so if you're new to the area, or you want to volunteer, we have that aspect. When we go to all of the events, we have these flyers that we give out that state, hey, we need help, and inside, we keep it up to date, has all of the chief's information so that they can contact them. Jennifer sits at a table, takes all their information, or other volunteers sit at the table, take all their information, and that following week after the event, she's out there calling them. Hey, you signed up, you were interested, let's get you to the closest department, we get more information on them, and we send them to that department to volunteer. Some of them work out, others, they get there and go, whoa, we didn't expect it to be this much work. And, and it just, it doesn't work out. We take it as it is, we continue to do it, so not only the county page, off the OES page, we link all the fire departments that have a Facebook page, and we're constantly putting stuff out on that, on what's happening, when we go to events, we have them out there so the public is aware. We're trying. I've done radio spot, ninety-two talk radio in the morning, didn't see any response out of that one. We've got a couple off of the burp broadcast, we're running those again, and I'll be going out to those radio stations again, trying to get the word out to see.
So Matt, back to the ISO rating, and they have the option, say that they option not to consolidate, they come in, their ISO rating gets higher, which is worse. So, if it gets to a point where they, ten is the far as you can go, right?
Correct.
So, what if they hit that, or if they want them to close their doors, they either have to consolidate then with somebody, or do they take the chance of closing the doors?
They would be, so when ISO comes in and they do their inspection and their grading, basically, the community will have six months to come up with a plan on how to fix it. If ISO believes that it's fixable in that six months, they will go, come back and reevaluate. If it is not fixable in a six-month period, then the community will have to decide whether they want to shutter, shutter the doors or be absorbed by another department. This happened in, I believe it was twenty thirteen, twenty fifteen, with Upper Cox Canyon. ISO came in and they received, I believe, a ten, and James Canyon, it was discussed, and James Canyon came in and absorbed the Upper Cox Canyon Fire Station and District, and it enlarged James Canyon's response area. It has happened in Otero County before, Upper Cox is one of them, Dog Canyon's another one, Oro Grande, people have moved out, not wanted to volunteer, whatever the case was back then, those departments were absorbed by Bull's Acres.
The last thing I want is to have a department's doors closed and the residents in that area go into a danger or a risk. I mean, I understand there's other departments, not so bad in the flats, but in the mountains, it is bad. I mean, because of the distance between the houses, so, I mean, I like the way you're giving them the option, they also have to think what's going to be the best for the county also.
If they're not sure right now, and they want to consolidate later, is that a possibility?
It is. You know, if, like, if Mayhill and Sacramento come up to me after the meeting and go, you know what, this is not going to work, we don't want to do it, we're going to continue pressing on as our own entities, they absolutely can. And then, whenever ISO comes to inspect Mayhill, because they'll get inspected before Sac Weed, Sac Weed just had theirs. ISO will determine what their rating is, and they will have to go from there, whether they stay as Mayhill because they were able to maintain, or they weren't able to maintain and their grade slips to that nine, ten. Because where Mayhill is right now, I believe, is a class seven, so they would go down.
And also, on their, if their rating goes up, their minimum amount of money goes down also on their yearly deal.
So, yes, if they go to a class ten, if they go to a class ten department... Ten department, they are guaranteed thirty-four thousand, nine hundred and forty-four dollars. And that is all that they're guaranteed. By state statute. I tell you, a class nine department right now is getting about sixty thousand, sixty-five thousand dollars a year. Which is more than the state minimum. But that's just the state fire marshal's office with their formula they have based off the money that comes in off of insurance. So some of these departments sitting at a hundred thousand dollars a year. Are going to go down to sixty, maybe seventy thousand dollars, they'll lose a good thirty to forty thousand dollars in funding.
So this is all volunteer. The reason why we're doing this is because of the lack of volunteers and we're trying to. To merge these departments in order to get our ISO ratings up and work together. So we already have auto aid and mutual aid. I get yelled at for confusing.
Yes, we have mutual aid agreements, we have auto aid agreements with all the fire departments. The. Problem with. Auto aid. Is. If you look at. Sac Weed being the department that has a structured fire. They really don't have any. True auto aid because the departments are too far away from their boundaries. Even though May Hill and Pinion may be paged at the same time to the structured fire. They are responding. But unless Sacramento Weed can have four of their members plus a tender driver on scene. None of, well, no one else would count. By them combining stations, we're enlarging their district. And now. The members of May Hill. And Sacramento. Are one department, their station may be, they're still responding the same distance. But when they show up to that structured fire, they are counted because it's their department that has responded.
The most common. Comment that was stated to me during this last thirty days isn't like Pinion. Is now being dispatched to May Hill and. For stub toes and that kind of stuff and they don't, they don't want to devote that kind of time outside of their community, they'll, they'll. They'll respond for the, a Pinion member's stub toe, but they don't want to be about one o'clock in the morning going to May Hill for a stub toe. So, so how do we keep that community?
So what is going to happen is. They will have. The large district, because the district is going to get bigger. The stations aren't closing, there will be station assignments that get toned out. So if it's in the May Hill area, May Hill is still going to get toned out for it. Pinion's not going to know any different that there was a call in May Hill. Because it was a stub toe.
Is that the way it is now?
Yes, it's just done by department. Now it'll be done, yes, it's the same department, if this, if that truly is what. Happens with Pinion, Sac Weed and May Hill, they would not know that there was a call in May Hill. Until the morning, till they looked at their, their phones because they get or possibly get a report on a phone. Maybe not, but it's going to go station assignment, what is the closest station to that call? They're going to get, if it's a structured fire, they'll know about it because all stations will get the alert. You need to respond to May Hill for this structured fire. So a- as far as the EMS calls, the, the traffic accidents, that will all be done by station assignments.
And then back to the volunteer shortages and the recruitment of volunteers. We're still, a year from now, going to be talking about this again because we're just still going to be shortage of volunteers and so how's the state fire marshal then? With more control over, over us doing this, going to be a year from now?
State fire marshal doesn't have any more control over us than they do today.
This isn't more state oversight by this consolidation?
No. The, the meeting that they had with the state was to say, hey, if this is the route you guys want to go, which questions do you have? This is what's going to happen with funding, it's not a. A grab, if you will, by the state, they still have the same oversight they have today as they have. Five years from now unless legislators change that in state statute.
And how many volunteers are needed to fully staff volunteers in the county?
As this sits right now. Two hundred and. Twenty-five volunteers. I believe puts twelve at each station. Or department, sorry.
You said last month's meeting that it takes one paid employee to be the same value as three volunteers.
Correct.
And obviously. My, I was guessing a hundred and ninety volunteers and when I ran my mouth, that meant we'd had to have sixty-three paid employees. To oversee or be equitable to those volunteers. That's right? And so if that's the direction that we're going, I'm assuming it's going to be that fund that where they pay a hundred percent. And seventy-five percent and all that is eventually where we're going to more paid staff and I see in here where you put, it says. That you want to hire a deputy chief and three district chiefs. And that's kind of the vision that I wanted to see in your plan, what does that look like, three district chiefs? So here you have seven districts, so you would have a chief.
That is over multiple districts. That would take some of the issues that some of the chiefs, not all of them, have. They don't stay current with their reporting to the state, to NIFERS. Completing their para. Grants is always mentioned, but yet historically, Otero County submits between five and seven of the eighteen departments for grants. The chiefs don't want to take the time to write it. By putting it on the district chief. They would be responsible to write those grants, to go out. And take care of basically all that paperwork that the chiefs don't want to do. And again, it's not all of them because there are chiefs that understand it and they want to work it and they don't have a problem with it. But it's more the command staff saying, okay, you guys can come here. And I will take care of all of this, so you guys can. Fight fire, put Band-Aids on, whatever it is, and that would get written out in that department's policies.
And then going back to the funding, if you have three departments merged into one. And they have sixty thousand dollars each. And, and somebody decides they need a shovel. It all is one kitty and you take from everybody to pay for that shovel. Right?
All that funding goes into one new department and operational costs. To keep the station clean, to stuff there, the, whoever's in charge of that station. Will have that authority to go out and buy that. When it gets bigger than a shovel. Yeah, it, it's going to go to that chief and say, okay, I need. Fifteen radios, this is why. And then that department says, yeah, we agree, or no, you only need three radios. Because I've got four radios here that I can give you, because they can transfer it, because it's their department. They should not have to buy as much. Stuff. Clothing, radios, whatevers. Because now all that is into one pool for that new department. And you can move. Those assets around inside that department.
And all the fire departments agree with sharing the funds like that?
Some of them are still trying to figure it out, so to speak, whether. They're okay with it or not okay with it, but at the end of the day. When it's a new department, all that funding by the state goes to that new department. It doesn't go to. Each station anymore, it goes to the new department. So. If we look at. Alma West, Bull's Acres, Far South and Orvista. Right now collectively. They get eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars.
Did you say district wide?
Collectively, all four of those departments. And those four departments are looking at becoming one. They would have the budget from the state of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand, eight hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Whereas Alma West right now has a two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollar budget, Bull's Acres, three hundred and thirty-five. Far South, a hundred and six, Orvista, two hundred and twenty-three. So being able to take eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars to go out and purchase. Larger ticket items. Is now possible without having to save for. Five, ten years for each department, running on a hundred thousand or two hundred thousand dollar budget. Because that new eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars is going to go to one department. And what is the needs of this station, what is the needs of this station? And that chief has to determine that, along with the members, they have to tell their leadership, hey. The roof is leaking, I really need it fixed. And if they're not vocal like that, it's not going to happen. But the new chief, his district in this case gets bigger, he has more responsibility. And he has to make sure those. Eight stations thrive and do what they're supposed to do.
And it's my understanding, we'd lost a lot of these volunteers because of the qualified immunity. And so a lot of them didn't want to be at risk and so they quit and that's why we're at, partially why we're at now. And are we doing anything to help support and show that we want to recruit and support? With qualified immunity, is there any kind of protection barriers we could add to help recruit volunteers?
So when the qualified immunity came out, we met with an MC. We met with the county attorney and said, what is the ramification to our volunteers? They assured us that the county has to protect them. And the only way that they would go after a member, if you will, is after the dust had settled from the lawsuit. Because they had, were deemed to have done something malicious. If they've done something malicious, then yes, they can. Lose that protection of qualified immunity. But as long as they are doing everything according to their SOPs, SOGs. There's really nothing to worry about. We tried to spread that message. It fell on deaf ears. And there was nothing we could do. It really hasn't been brought up again. But we can continue to spread that message, yes, we will protect you as long as you're doing your job.
So, and I know I asked you this before. La Luz, Burrow Flats and Jack Rabbits, if you were La Luz, Burrow.
Okay.
No, I'm sorry, Bent, that's what I wanted to put in there is Bent. So. And I don't know their actual ISO ratings, but I think La Luz is good, I think they're like a four?
La Luz is a five.
A five? And then Bent, eight or nine?
Bent is a five, Burrow Flats is a five, Jack Rabbit Flats is a six.
Oh, that's all better than I thought they were.
Yeah.
Good, because I was guessing at the numbers.
The lowest department that I have is Timburon and May Hill at a seven.
Okay, so let's say we, we do Timburon, let's say Timburon is awesome and Pinion is not and Weed is not. And we, we make a district out of them and it brings that district ISO rating higher to what the best rating is already. Why does that fire department want to be a part of something that they worked so hard to achieve? And just because of merging, their ISO rating is going to get worse?
So their ISO rating. When, when they come together. And, and we'll go back to your other one with Ben, Burrow Flats, Jack Rabbit, La Luz. Yes, Jack Rabbit was the six. But until they get their ISO rating. All stations will be funded at an ISO class five. So next fiscal year when we report to the state, they will fund all five of those stations at an ISO class five. They have their ISO inspection. After that inspection, they get the new grading and that new grading is what the department will have. There's no reason to think. That a department like La Luz that just had theirs and, and received their five. Would go to a six or a seven because they've maintained all of that. Bringing in more people. As long as they continue down the road that La Luz had set up. There's no reason to expect a change in the overall ISO.
Okay, and I'm going to go back to volunteers again and volunteer recruitment. I did some digging in your budget, Julianne's help. And you have eighty thousand dollars of extra money and they're rolled over from last year. Why can't we give every single department right now, five hundred dollars? You have ninety days to recruit five volunteers. And after that ninety days, if they're still on board, we're going to give you a thousand dollars. For recruitment and retain your volunteers, go buy t-shirts, go buy rings with La Luz Fire Department all over and whatever. For that department in order to recruit and re- and retain volunteers, because that is our only issue is volunteers. And this consolidation does not solve that problem. Why can't we work towards solving that problem?
As long as we are not paying them out of that money, we would be okay.
Well, no, I mean, five hundred so they can have an event, buy brisket, this is all the stuff we do, squirt the water hose. Have a competition, who can squirt the hose the farthest, I don't know, whatever you guys do, but. Make it fun and exciting and make people want to be a part of it. You know, five hundred per department, every, that gives the department. The, the opportunity to do something individual for their department, to show the people what they're all about and cook hamburgers and hot dogs and create that camaraderie and. And then somebody says, hey, I want to be a part of that. And, and why can't we do that instead of this?
We can do that.
Because that would fix it, right? And then we still have our auto aid and mutual aid and all of that.
It's not. It potentially could fix it and then rely on your auto aid, but it's not a guaranteed fix. If you don't have people moving into your community, how are you going to recruit them if your community is not growing?
I, I. I don't, and I might be wrong, I don't see the recruitment of somebody that's moved to Alamogordo. Freshly here. freshly here wanting to get involved in the community. It's people that are invested in our community already. They would want to volunteer, but maybe we're not reaching those people with these opportunities and what the cause and effect is.
It can be done. It's something that, yes, I can fund. But it's something that the fire departments individually, the chiefs, could have been doing already
Agree.
and haven't been doing. They had that same amount of money available to them.
I agree, but I think I would like to see you give every department five hundred dollars in ninety days to recruit volunteers. And see where that goes. And then those that get whatever number we set, five volunteers for ninety days, buy some swag. We appreciate everybody that's volunteering for us. Wear your La Luz Fire Department shirt and be proud, something. And I think volunteer recruitment. And I think we're at a time where we can actually make a difference with volunteers and get them recruited. The nation's kind of changing and wanting to invest back into our community. And I think now is the time. There was something...oh, with you hiring. And so, right now, every single department elects their chief annually. Does that department still elect a chief? Or does the district elect a chief? How does that look?
As far as...
Is there going to be one chief for whatever district? Or is each fire department still going to have that chief?
So, under consolidation, the new departments would elect their chief. They would elect basically their command staff to run their new department.
Which would be one person for possibly three departments?
No, one person for one department.
One department that is a new district?
Yes.
Okay, which is, in essence, three departments merging together. So, Mayhill might be the chief of Pinone.
If that's the way the membership votes, yes. Because the membership would be the ones doing that voting based off of SOPs, SOGs, bylaws that get set up, if that's the direction that we're going to move.
I just think we're taking away local control. And I know we're talking about little bitty fire departments, local. They know their area, they know their needs. And can you imagine Mayhill chief calling Pinone and saying, "This is your new policy. Here you go, do it." But it doesn't have anything to do with their community?
Which is why, if this is the direction that we're going to go, we are sitting down with those departments to finalize, to come together and build the bylaws and the SOPs, SOGs for that new department. That way, we can ensure everyone's interests are still being met.
And with your hiring, I don't know. I just did a base wage of forty thousand. I don't know what it would cost for those four people. That's a hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year, plus benefits, plus insurance, plus taxes, plus all of that is what we're going to be adding on to the budgets, right?
Which is why I would be seeking funding sources so that we can not have to come up with as much.
But that budget source is only a hundred percent the first year, seventy-five percent the second year. And by the fifth year, the county's one hundred percent responsibility, right?
If that's the budget source that I track down, yes.
So, I did a projected value with the assessor yesterday. And we did it...I did it based on the last five years of growth to determine what our average would be for the next five years, the last five years for the next five years of growth. So, last year, the income was thirty-five million for just property taxes. And if you project the growth to 2029, it's going to go to forty-four million dollars. And so, out of that budget, we're going to be funding these departments and hiring. And it's going to... In every single instance where these people, where other counties have merged, it's more than four employees that get hired. I can expect, I think, out of ours will turn into probably ten to fifteen employees in the end of this that it will cause. So, that budget, have you looked at the projected amount that we're going to be spending five years from now in the case, even just with those four that you're suggesting?
Not to great lengths because I don't have that funding available. I'm still searching for funding that is not reliant on a hundred percent of first year and having the county at year five, a hundred percent. So, no, I have not.
And then I know also with this district sharing goes with district sharing of equipment. And I know I always have a problem with drivers. I share equipment. I always try to give them, "This is your truck." Because who broke that mirror? Who didn't check the oil? Who had this tire blow out? That's what we're going to have with these shared departments. "Hey, Amy, go grab truck number two ninety-two and take it here." And then, "Oh, man, I broke the light bar on a tree." I'm not going to tell anybody because somebody else will drive it before it gets noticed. That's what we're going to run into with these shared...
We already have that. We seriously already have that. It is shared equipment because Jimmy is not assigned to this truck because Jimmy might not be available. So, whose truck is it then? So, it is a shared truck today. It's just a larger pool of assets that is available to that one district, that one department. And through truck inspections that happen, that's when some of the stuff is found. And then they go back, "All right, who is doing this?" Some of them are honest and let us know. Others are not. It's upsetting. But it happens today. And I know it happened when I was doing safety. It's happening while Josh is doing safety. It happens.
So, tell me again, what is the major benefit of this consolidation?
The major benefit, as it stands today, is the departments that are going to be consolidating, that wish to do so, their department has grown, their roster has grown for countable people. Not necessarily that I am going to get to your house faster because I'm a little further away. But that person, when they show up on scene, will count as a responder under the ISO grading system.
So, yesterday, there was that fire out on Seventy, east of Tulareosa? Was it yesterday or the day before? And I think La Luz was the only one that responded. No? Well, I know, I know, no, no, I know. I know, I heard Alamo West. I'm talking about in the district. Sorry, sorry. Yes, I heard you guys were paged out too. But I meant, I didn't hear Bent.
Are we talking about the Wildland Fire?
Yes. I didn't hear Jack Rabbit.
So, Bent was there, Jack Rabbit was there, La Luz was there. Had that been a structure fire, that would have been... Borough Flats was there. Donegan was there. I was not there because I was out of town. So, I'm still piecing that one together. But had that been a structure fire, that was in Bent's district? Bent has three people, I think, right now? That doesn't qualify any of their auto aid as counting as responders. So, that, right there, for Bent community, is not meeting response needs. And Borough Flats coming in, La Luz coming in, Jack Rabbit coming in, Donegan coming in. Those people responded, same as they will tomorrow if they're consolidated. The difference is, today, they do not count responders on scene for that department. Tomorrow, they do.
Okay, so, because it's not consolidated, then Alamo West doesn't get credit for responding out on Highway Seventy?
Alamo West gets credit for responding out there. And Borough Flats gets credit. Everyone that responded gets credit. But when ISO comes in and says, "Okay, you had a structure fire here. How many people responded?" They had three. I can't even count my auto aid then because only three people showed up. I needed to have four. With a tender driver that show up in order to start counting the auto aid departments. So, I can auto aid the entire county if it was possible. It isn't. But if it was, they showed up. None of them count towards Bent meeting their goal for that structure fire of having those people on scene. Now, we take it tomorrow and they're a consolidated department with Bent, Borough Flats, Jack Rabbit Flats, La Luz, Donegan. All those people that showed up are in one department. So, now, I went from having three people in a department on scene to maybe twenty. All twenty of those are now responding to the structure fire. And ISO says, "You've met your goal of response." You're meeting your engine goal. You're meeting your water goal.
What is...
It can't be done when a department only responds one person because Jack Rabbit Flats has one person available during a daytime fire.
How many are required to respond on a structure fire from a department in their area?
A minimum to count their auto aid, five.
And how many are required to respond on a wireline fire?
None. Because, again, state statute is funding us to structure firefight off of the ISO scale. I would hope that we get a hundred people on a Wildland Fire on an EMS call. But as far as the funding piece, the ISO grading piece, doesn't matter how many respond. Doesn't matter how many respond to the EMS call as far as the grading goes, as far as the service to the community that you said you were going to do as a department. Oh, it matters a lot because the residents deserve a response.
And so, from the fire chief's perspective, you see this as a benefit because if you're not available to respond and the other department responds, you still get the benefit? Is it? And without the consolidation, you don't get the benefit? Is that the gist? But if you had enough volunteers and they responded, you'd get the benefit?
Most of them don't respond during the day anyway. Most of our time is taken up from eight in the morning till about six o'clock. Nobody responds during the day, are they?
We have lots of eighty-year-olds who have been fighting fires. So, wouldn't you want to see a really strong effort for volunteer recruitments to help you out?
The biggest problem with volunteer recruiting is that you can get them in your station. It still takes a great deal of time for the training to occur, to make them firefighters so that they count for at least their training to become firefighters before they can count on the ISO rating. So, there's a training component involved in the length of time that it's going to take.
And it does. It takes a very long time. I've been watching that process.
Even if we could go out and use your volunteer money right now to recruit people, we wouldn't be able to put those people probably on fires for six months at the moment. Or yeah, longer.
And if your district's in our retirement community, you are left with seventy-five-year-olds, eighty-year-olds.
And we're all getting there too.
That is what they're saying about with going out recruiting. Yes, absolutely, we can go out and recruit. But that's one of the reasons why ISO, when you form that new department, you have one year because they want to see the training component. Doesn't matter whether it's a new department or an old department. ISO goes back one year to get the training data, the fire data, the personnel data for that year. And that's what they look at. So, even if we started and gave them the ninety days today, that is not sufficient time to get them trained, to put them to use on the fire ground. And ISO also would not look at them because it would hurt the department as far as their training hours because they're going to be short in training.
And Amy, if I can kind of mention one thing. You were talking about the funding for a hundred percent this year, seventy percent, and go down. We've been doing that for six years for David Black, back there with the Sheriff's Department. It's part of the process. We budgeted it in, we get it to work out. It's just part of it. Three-quarters of the, a lot of the people that I've talked to, they're already kind of consolidating now. Most all your Flatland people are doing it. So, it's...my eyes are already doing it. It just hadn't been blessed or however you want to call it. There's probably pros and cons on both ways, each way you look at it. But it sounds to me like they're basically doing it now. And with the option, if that department decides they want to join or if they don't want to join, that's their option. What's going to be the best? I think they're deciding what's going to be the best for fire rescue or emergency services in Ochoa County. If they decide to join together, they can manage, protect it better, and be a safer place, in my opinion. I did want you to make sure you realize that we are doing that, the funding part, with the Sheriff's Department.
So, let me go back to the funding for the departments. If five departments apply for state funds, two hundred thousand dollars each, that puts one million dollars in their kitty for that one district now would be one million dollars? Or is that one application for two hundred thousand dollars?
Each FDID number or department, and it would be a new department, gets to put in for a grant. Depending on what the grant is, it can be up to six hundred thousand dollars. So, that department, again, using Alma West, Bull's Acres, Far South, or Ora Vista, with having a new budget of eight hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars, maybe only needs one grant for a new truck at six hundred thousand dollars. And then they can take that operational money that they have and put it towards another need that they may have gone out for a grant for in the past as far as the state fire marshal grants go. They're still able to put in for assistance to firefighters through FEMA, other grant programs that are out there. They're still able to apply for those. It just takes it, instead of Alma West, Bull's Acres, Far South, and Ora Vista getting a possibility of, a possibility of six hundred thousand dollars each, now it's one department for six hundred thousand dollars.
You did that training burn next to Dispatch?
Yes.
How many volunteers showed up for that? Did they get any certifications or any training or anything from that?
That was all training. And their training officer should have gone back in and put in their training time. They get credit for a live burn. They get credit for... They get credit for multi-company. They get credit for mutual aid training that is required by the state and by ISO. As long as their training officer or fire chief made sure that got entered in, yeah, they got credit. If their department did not do the report, they didn't get credit for it.
So Matt, can you explain, we visited the other day. You had 2 million, 3 million. There was a pool, 1 million death pool.
So when the helicopter crashed a couple of years ago in Albuquerque, killing the sheriff's deputy, the firefighter that was on board, and I think the other guy was also attached to the sheriff's office, the death benefit out of that was $2,250,000. A million each to the law enforcement side of the family, $250,000 to the fire side. We fought with the legislators to get that increased and said, we want that money coming out of the state's general fund. And they'd said, absolutely not. Figure it out. You get your own budget based off of the, based off of your insurance. That is where all of our money comes from. Anything that the fire department wants to do comes out of that insurance money that is collected by every citizen in the state of New Mexico that pays a fire insurance. So they told us, if you want the million-dollar death benefit, fund it yourself. So a pool of money goes to the death benefit. A pool of money making sure that we meet the state statute to distribute to all of the fire departments is set off to the side. A pool of money for para comes out of everyone's insurance that we have to fund all the time. The state fire marshal's office is funded out of that same account. The grant is funded out of that same account. So we've taken the, I don't know, $90 million that they collected this year, and it sits in our fund. And that's how the state fire marshal's office has to distribute that funding. If it's good year, we get excess of the state statute to operate off of. If it's a poor year, they'll go down to the state statute being a minimum because we have to keep that death benefit up. We have to keep the para up. We have to still fund the state fire marshal's office, the training facility at Socorro. It's stuff that still has to be funded out of one pool of money. We struggle to get anything out of the state legislators to assist us. Whatever we have, that's the money we get to operate out of.
I mean, I see it, but I see it both ways, but I still go back to the original reason. We're here, lack of volunteers, and we're going to be here a year from now, lack of volunteers. And then how we fix it.
Well, I think if we had the best of both worlds, if we consolidated to kind of help it's in the short term, but still do a heavy push on volunteers, because we've got to get volunteers. I mean, I mean, it's just, we have to. So I was even thinking, with the weather cooling off, if we did like a, an event, you know, at the parking lot of the fairgrounds and had the fire trucks out there and really made some pushes in different areas and really start, really focusing on this as a county.
We have fire prevention coming up. I think it's October 12th. The state fire marshal's office has chosen Alamo Gordo to be their big push. It's also the same day as the third annual food truck wars, and we're doing it at Washington Park with them. So there will be a recruiting push there. There will be a lot of fire prevention stuff that we don't have access to because I don't have all of that to buy the, the smoke trailer, the, everything else that the state has or Holloman has. So we'll be bringing that out for everyone. Tonight, we have the 9/11 ceremony where we'll be parading down from the college to Archie's house to have a memorial service there.
On Lover's Lane?
On Lover's. He has that memorial that's permanently set up to his buddies because Archie did come from FDNY and he was there. So it's set up that way and we're just continuing to go down there. They have, I don't remember the date, but they had the stair climb or are about to have the stair climb for 9/11. It's stuff that we've already been doing. It's just not getting the results that everyone wants.
We need to attack the schools too, the juniors and seniors in high school on career days also, every school.
Absolutely.
Whether Tulareosa, Chaparral, Cloudcroft, need to hit them off.
Walt, did you have something to say?
Yep. Hi, my name's Walt Kaufman Weed, and thank you commissioners for listening to me for a minute. I have some experience with the fire departments for 20 years or so. I just want to put quick facts and things. I, it's been a good discussion. I think we've covered most of the issues and Commissioner Mark Ward leaned toward what you just said, believe it or not.
I'm going to write that on my calendar right now. Walt agreed with me. Hallelujah.
I think, I think everybody here has noted that this is a temporary fix. The ISO thing is important for funding and, and we need to do something to address that. So I, but, but if we don't do something about volunteers, ask yourself, what's the county going to do? So you only have a couple of, three options, right? You can just not do anything and the service goes in the toilet and eventually you may have trouble with the state. Or you can recruit volunteers, or you can hire people. So Commissioner Barella kind of nibbled around that, but let me tell you that hiring people is an expensive process. My numbers show, and I think I've shared it with you guys, that, you know, we're talking maybe 3 to 15 million dollars depending on how, you know, how many you have to replace with hired. Obviously, you're not going to replace all the volunteers at once, but if you set us on the course of not recruiting, eventually we're going to have to. So if there's 200, and I use the number 250, I didn't know what the true numbers were. But if you look at 250 volunteers and over a period of time, maybe 10 years or even 20 years, if you replace them all, that's a lot of money. You're talking 15 million. That's a serious part of the budget. So I would encourage the commissioners to do the right thing now so that we don't have a crisis next year or the year after or so on. And keep in mind that the crisis we're in right now is not a new, it didn't suddenly hit you in the head. These ISO problems have been around for a while. We have a failure in emergency services, and I know some of you know my feelings are strong on that. And the symptoms are delays in response, especially in District 3, where sometimes AMR gets to the scene first because there's no responders in the mountains. And you see higher insurance costs, you see losses, you see the ISO ratings going down. These are all little flags telling you that you've got a problem. And the problem is not the ISO scores. We need to do something about the ISO because it's how we get our money. And it's a good tool for fire departments. I'm not belittling ISO, but that is not the problem. The problem is staffing. We don't have enough volunteers. If we jump around to do the hoops and combine departments and do all that stuff, how many volunteers have we added? Well, none. And in fact, just the messing around restructuring and, and you realize that if you combine districts, you're going to require the volunteers to do more travel time and you're going to do additional training to learn this, the new equipment they have access to. And volunteers are not, some of them are going to quit. You're going to lose some volunteers. So the redistricting will actually kind of reduce volunteers, but it will help ISO. So it's a trade-off, you know? But the key is, it is a temporary thing. And so, you know, I, I have a solution, of course. I wouldn't be here, wouldn't be here if I didn't have a solution. And I like Commissioner Barella's ideas. I think the county, if you look at what you've done, not you personally, but the county's done over the last, say, 10 years, it's been a real amateur hour on trying to recruit volunteers. All of us, I've done it, and I'm sure you guys have helped do it, go out and try to bring people in. We should do the welcome wagon thing. Somebody move into town, we're going to bring them groceries, win around, put our arm around and say, you need to volunteer for the fire department. That's, that's good. We need to keep doing that. The fire chiefs know their district, at least is the way it is structured now, and so they need to be recruiting. But that's a pittance to what the county needs to do. The county needs to step in and make sure there's consistent, high-quality recruiting in the county. And why, why spend $50,000 on that? Well, I just mentioned what it's going to cost you to get paid. Paid people are going to cost you $15 million. So a small amount of money invested in recruiting pays off big time for the, so you don't have to hire staff. And the county has not, I can't say this enough, they have not done that in the past. You know, bless Matt here, he's talked about some of the stuff he's doing, I'm not going to belittle that, but I will point out that the websites and all that stuff, some of them are up to date, some of them are not. If you look back over what's gone over the last 10 years, it's just real helter-skelter. It's not professional. We're talking big money here. We need to get us, up our game a little bit. And I've heard Commissioner Mathrily express the doubt that we can hire, get, excuse me, recruit volunteers. And it is a new world. It is harder. So rather than just say we can't do it, I'd say to you, look, we need to invest some money and the time to make it happen. And if we don't do that, then I'm a taxpayer. What do you think the taxes are going to be in this county when we start bringing in full-time people on? I don't even want to go there. Let's talk volunteers for just a second. Believe it or not, the rate of volunteers for just overall is pretty flat. That is, despite what you might gut feel, we got, we had the same amount of people willing to volunteer 10 years ago as there are now. However, formal volunteers, and that's people that want to go into an organization, that's plummeted. It's gone down over the last five years, it's gone down about 8%. I suspect it's down 10% over what it was a few years ago here. So that makes that recruiting a challenge. And I think if we just continue to do what we've been doing, we're going to fail for recruiting volunteers. But now here's the good news. According to statistics, if that means anything, here in Otero County, the volunteer pool is roughly 7,000 people. And that's as of a couple of years ago, most current statistics and so on, and that's people that aren't my age, you know, or younger and are in that, that range to be able to do firefighting. So it's a pretty good-sized pool. I think the issue, as Commissioner Barella's pointed out or been pointing out, is that we're just not reaching the people. And frankly, if you have some old dead webpages that was updated three years ago, yeah, you're not reaching people. I don't know if Tony's here, but I loved when Tony was sitting here next to Matt and he said, by golly, we had 30 new volunteers. And this is after I've heard some commissioner say he can't do it. Well, of course, I'm not saying Tony set fires, but the big fires they've been having in Timberon is enough to inspire people. And that's what you need to do, is you need to get somebody that knows how to recruit volunteers and can go inspire them to join and to help their community. So I, I say to you, if you want to combine departments, I'm not, I'm not really in favor of that, but it's not a big heartburn for me. But what is a huge heartburn for me is that attitude, we can't do it, we can't get recruits, we just give up, we haven't, you know? If you look at what the county's done, they have not tried. You know, I, I, and I've asked you commissioners, and I'll point it out again, what's the budget for recruiting volunteers? How much money's in the budget for this year, last year, year before, year before that, year before that? How much money's in there? And matter of fact, is there any line item anywhere in the Otero County budget that addresses recruiting? His answer is no, there's not any. I asked Matt about his recruiting and he said, well, he shifted some money around and he come up with, I think he said 5,000 bucks. Great, but you notice he had to shift money around. So I, I'm just, I'm saying to you that this ISO thing is, is okay. I mean, you've, you've said what needs to be said. And there's not much more. We're beating a dead horse. But it's not the most important thing you're actually doing. The most important thing you're actually doing is trying to get volunteers or sentencing up and saying, we're going to hire people. I mean, those are your options. I hope you're not going to take the option where you just let the service deteriorate, which is kind of what we're doing now. It's a bad idea. It hurts people like me and others. There's a couple of things that kind of missed on ISO, I'm going to revert back to that. It's not as important as hiring volunteers, don't get me confused, but, or are you confused? Response time is actually an important thing. And combining districts helps with the budget. But response time is where people live or die. It's kind of overlooked in our discussion, you know? I'll give you an example here. In an emergency, having five responders in 15 minutes on a scene is likely better than having 15 responders in 45 minutes. So think about that. And the way you get those responders is you have local people that are volunteers. If you're relying on volunteers in, well, Timberon to drive over to respond to Pinon, well, it's going to take them 45 minutes or an hour to drive over there. So, but it counts for ISO. Well, you don't need that. But don't lose sight of the fact that if you don't have the volunteers, the people suffering are the residents who have to wait for that response. You know, I'll give you another example of driving home maybe. If your house is on fire and your family's inside, do you want to have those 12 firefighters show up an hour later? Or you want to have five of them show up in 15 minutes? And that is not, not talked about as far as this ISO thing goes in this combining districts. It'd be real easy to combine the districts and say, we're finished. And then, as Commissioner Barella said, two years from now, you know, some commissioners are back into this again. Then I'll just close on a little personal note and I'll leave you alone. You know, a few years ago, several years ago, the fire chief and I were in a brush truck who went to a fire, brush fire, and it was close to a guy's house. And one thing about crewing with the chief is, you know, we were first in and by golly, we were last out. Everybody left and the chief was wandering around making sure everything was okay. And I'd been ready to go home for several hours. And I'd been ready to go home for several hours. And we pull up to the gate to leave, and the guy comes out that had the house and his land, and man, he just, he shook our hands and he said, "Thank you, thank you, thank you." And we gave him the old, "Gee, it's our job," you know? I think I told him that's why I get the big bucks, is helping this. So he said, "Well, okay, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, I'll be right back." So he went in the house for a minute, came back, and he shows up with a fifth of whiskey. Not a new fifth. He apologized, said, "I'm sorry, this is all I've got." And, and gave it to us. I'm not going to say if we kept it or not. But the point is that he was real appreciative. And over the years, you know, I'm sure all the firefighters in here have gotten thank yous, handshakes, occasionally you get a letter. And it kind of gives you a warm and fuzzy. And I want to use this story to illustrate how we might get volunteers, okay? In 20 years or so I've done firefighting with Otero County, I've never had an Otero County manager come up and thank me for my service, or recognize a anniversary, or any kind of attaboy. And it's no big deal to me. Frankly, I don't care much. But it shows the attitude by the management of the county. And it shows what we need to do to change what we're, the way we're thinking. We need to be thinking about the fact that the volunteers are a valuable resource, and they're fragile and can be run off. And so what can the county do? What can they implement to do recruiting and retain the volunteers? So, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Did anybody else, did you want to say something?
I'm Roberta Hanneman, I'm the chair for the Firefighters Association, as well as the assistant chief for Borough Flats. The one thing we've had in all of our chiefs' discussions is that if we want to do this, we need to do this with a united front. And I am very much with Commissioner Markwork. This is something that is going to help us now. I'm going to have the same amount of people that we're going to get there in 15 minutes, get there in 15 minutes. I just have more, all my auto aid now counts, even if I only get three people there in 15 minutes, okay? I know a while back, I was like, "Oh, I don't think we're there yet." And I remember having a conversation with Commissioner Burrella. I'm going to say, "We're there now," okay? There are a lot of departments that need this help. It will help with the training. It may even help with the recruiting when we're showing that we're doing something and we're getting good training out to these people. So that, I think it will really help in that respect as well. It also will help, yes, it will keep more money here in the county through the ISO system. We're not going to lose anything because each station still gets funded as a ISO whatever we are. All those main stations get that main station funding. So we're not going to lose any money. We may gain some money because the guys that have the best part of the district, and they give us that ISO rating, then everybody gets it, even the outlined ones. So I think it's a good thing. I've been with this fire service in the county since 1988, okay? I have seen where we took departments and we added departments, and I've seen where we've had to pull them back in. I was here when we added Upper Cops. I was here when we added Jackrabot Flats. Now, we have that same problem. And I'll say, a lot of the volunteers from Jackrabot Flats ended up passing away, unfortunately. Several of the volunteers we used to have for Borough Flats have passed away. I mean, we are all older people, a lot are retired. When I teach out in the county, I'm teaching people anywhere from age 18 to age, I think the oldest I've done is age 80, for starting up and teaching. I help teach fire, I teach EMS within the county. And it's really great when I see somebody, "Well, I'm retired now, I can help the community." But that's basically where we are getting our volunteers right now. We're not getting the guy that's running and working two jobs and not got to have family time. We're not getting those anymore. We're getting those retired people. And it does, it takes, it takes time to train all those people. This will give us the time to recruit new people and train them in the community, you know? So coming back together to help each other, I think is a good thing. And the most of the chiefs, through the chiefs' meetings, through our association meeting, have been in favor of this. So it's not something that we just forced on anybody, okay? So that's where I stand.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, before you see, I-
Sorry, I just, I want to add some stuff on the recruitment. So with the recruitment, we're doing this, we're doing Facebook posts, we, me and Matt have gotten together where whenever we go to the county fair or any other Heritage Day, anything like that, we kind of set out a game plan of who we're trying to attract. Usually, the little kids will come up and see all of the stuff that is on our table. With a little kid, usually comes a parent, a cousin, an older person that's with them. We, I would say, at least on average, at these events that we've gone to, we've had at least two pages full of people that have signed up to get information for volunteering. And the next week, I will call them, I will email them, I will let them know, "Hey, this is the chief that you're going to be dealing with, this is the chief that you need to get ahold of, this is when they meet." And I will get back with that chief and be like, "Hey, did so-and-so show up?" And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. It's not, it's not a fact of us not trying to recruit these people, it's that some people just, they like the idea of it, and they want to put their name down, and they get excited about it, and then they see that, you know, they have to come to trainings every week, that they have to put in time, and some people don't have that time anymore. There's not, there's not a fact of not trying to recruit anyone. The recruitment is very much there. I mean, where I'm constantly posting on Facebook to try and get, you know, the volunteers out there. I've done a segment, I mean, I go on the radio regularly talking about volunteering and how we can get everybody in. We set up the page, and we let everybody know about it. It's on our flyers, I mean, the recruitment's there, it's just, unfortunately, people don't have the time or don't want to volunteer. It's not for a lack of trying at all. It has nothing to do with that.
Well, maybe as a county, we can step in and really start making an effort to help more with that.
And I have been in touch with the schools so that we can start doing career days and stuff, because if we can get them younger, then hopefully they'll stick with it. I know a couple of departments have younger kids that have stuck with it from 16, and they're now 18, 19 years old and still doing it, and are looking to go into, you know, working with wildfire and other stuff. So if we can get them younger, that's great, but there's also, there's only so much the younger ones can do, you know? And with today's economy, people can't afford to not work. They have to do their jobs, and unfortunately, the volunteers can only go from when they get off work to the time they go back to work. And they have families and everything else, so it's not for a lack of trying.
We need to try harder as a county, not just you guys, but I think all of us need to put more effort into this, because we have to get some more volunteers.
And with, you know, Tony saying that, from Timberon saying that he got like 30 new members, it's also the departments that have to go out and try and recruit too. It can't just fall all on us. They have to also put some work in as well.
I think it makes a difference when you're in your community, because you're protecting your neighbor's house, and they're going to protect your house. So that's, that's where the heart of the volunteer comes in to me, is because you live in that community and you hope they're going to show up when your house is on fire.
Exactly.
So, I mean, we've got to make an effort in all the areas.
And there's a couple of things in the structure that we hit on a little bit, select the election of a chief for the district. I don't want to see it turn out like New Mexico, where Albuquerque and Las Cruces decides who the governor is. So I would suggest a ranked choice election, so that all the departments are equally representative when they make a vote versus a department that has 10 and a department that has three, you know, so that every, it's equally, their vote weighs just as much as those with more members. Does that make sense? It's ranked choice. And I can help you set that up, so you understand how that's done. But, because if Pinion has five and Mayhill has 10, they're going to get outvoted and it's going to be Mayhill chief, and that may not be what's best for the departments. So that, and I also want to go back to the volunteer recruitment and the volunteer support. The attaboy, we've got to do better at.
I agree.
And I think if we implement a plan or policy for, you know, you say we're going to be hiring these people, that'd be perfect, when we can do a recognition board, let's say. Here's for the month, for this district now, this one department, here's the responses, and here's our top responders. You get a Snickers bar today, whatever, some sort of recognition that is, that is public, "Our best volunteers of the month," or something. So we can start giving them that positive feedback and say, and somebody else will say, "I want a Snicker bars too." You know, so let's do some, let's play with some different ideas, and, you know, and it, maybe not the battle of the food trucks at the best place, but I would like to see department wars, you know? Just like they have road truck wars at the commission's affiliates and all that, department wars. I mean, I don't know if that'd create a real war, but, I mean, but it'd be fun to, you know, do it at the Fairgrounds parking lot and shoot the water the farthest. I don't know how you do that, but something to make it fun. And let's just try it. But I want, in agreement with this, I want $500 to go to every single department for them to use to buy brisket, to buy Halloween candy, whatever, and have an event. And I want every single department to have an event over the next 60 to 90 days, and I want the, each one of us to be included on the invitation list. So it's also a meet your commissioner while you're in your district with that fire department at the same time, and then we can help twist somebody's arm to volunteer as well, and just see, because we are invested in this just as much as everybody else. And let's, let's make this work, because I don't want to have this conversation a year from now.
I want to have it when it's better.
Yes.
Next year when it's better.
I want to be, I want to say, "Matt, it worked, and all of this, that, all of this, me researching and everything, thank you very much." That's what I want to say next year. But you sold me on it. I still have a little knot in my gut. I'm not 1,000% sold on it, but I will be if you make it work. So, but I'm, I'm going to lean for it.
Okay, you ready to vote on this? Anybody else have anything to say?
I'd like to add a few things. Sacweed and Mayhill-
Come on up to the microphone so they can hear you at home.
Yes, ma'am.
And if you'll say your name, please.
I'm Cody Welch with Mayhill Fire Department. Sacweed and Mayhill has been working very closely since the consolidation has started. We've had chiefs' meetings, we've had meetings where all the members come together. We had our meeting Monday for Mayhill, and eight members from Sacweed came down. Pinion's been invited, they hadn't come to our station for meetings. They were invited to the Sacweed meeting, and I think Chief Paul came down for that one, but I haven't met any of the members. This is the first time I've met Walt. But as far as the consolidation goes, we're not in it, I'm not in it, and I don't think Mike Jones is either for getting the title of chief. We're in it for our community. And whoever is the best person gets voted in, and that's what it comes down to, is our community and our districts, keeping them safe. If Pinion wants to stay off on their own, that's fine with us. We're focused on each other, because we're working well together. As far as equipment, sharing trucks, their Rescue 845 is out of commission and will be for three months. I had a truck that has a shell on it and will carry the equipment, that that Rescue 845 will carry. So I loaned it to them, while theirs is in the shop, because I'm not using it that often. So we're already working together and sharing equipment and keeping our community safe. As far as the recognition goes, I think that's a chief thing. Mayhill has always had a recognition thing. In March, we recognized the person with the most call runs, which I used to get before I had my daughter, or I didn't have her.
Your wife might have something to say about that.
Yeah, I had a lot more time on my hands. And, you know, we recognize people for that, we give them five-year pins every five years that they're on there, but we do it in the department. And then we have an enchilada dinner that's very popular with the community. And we have flyers for recruitment, and we try to get people to join. As far as having 7,000, 7,000-person pool to choose from, you don't want to choose from everybody in that pool, because some people don't want to do it. I didn't want to be a firefighter when I was a kid, I was afraid of heights. I didn't know that most companies didn't have a ladder truck and don't have to be on that. But you want that person that wants to be a firefighter to come fight for your house, or fight for your life if you're having an EMT issue. You don't want the guy that's just there to get the T-shirt. You want the guy that wants to be there, and it doesn't take a T-shirt to keep him. I mean, it's nice to have a T-shirt, but you don't want those, you don't want just everybody to be a firefighter.
Yep, good point.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anything else? Anybody else? Okay, you ready to vote on it?
I'm ready.
Okay. All right, I make a motion to discuss and consider whether or not Otero County should consolidate Otero County volunteer fire departments.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Now the work just begins.
Now it begins.
Continues. Thank you, Matt.
We just clarified the motion that was-
That we are voting to consolidate.
Voting to consolidate.
Yes, yes. Thank you for coming, everybody. Okay, number nine, our last one of the day. Discuss and consider approval to explore and negotiate a potential economic development lease agreement between Otero County and New Mexico State Land Office for the operation
Do you want me to start?
Yes, go ahead. I'm sorry, I haven't seen this before, so.
No worries. So I was asked by Representative Townsend to kind of oversee and look at what this stood on. Apparently, Commissioner Mathrally's been working on it for a few months. And so I kind of did some deep diving in the situation, and the racetrack is near and dear to my heart. We were there for groundbreaking when it used to be a roundy-round track. And so I remember all of the nonprofit and what we did as an organization, putting back in the community and all that. And then with my kids growing up and being involved in racing, which you don't do four-wheelers anymore, but-
Insurance doesn't like that.
But, you know, all of that, the 300, 400 kids that show up for every single race, we're keeping them out of trouble. They come and eat in restaurants, they fill up in our gas stations, and-
I'm going to get emotional.
I know.
I haven't done that in a long time. Because the camaraderie at that racetrack and the family setting that we have out there is like none other. And so I feel like it's very, very important to support this track and keep it going regardless of which direction we go. But it looks like we're going to be losing this track. And this is something that I'm not going to just sit by and let happen. So I contacted Mr. Sage with the State Land Office to see what it would be like, what it looks like for the sublease. It originally, I just wanted to see what the situation of the land agreement was. And it turned into, well, the county has an option to take over this, this 80 acres of, of land and then sublease it over to whoever we decide. And then it led into me thinking about liabilities. Well, we have somebody out there that gets really bad hurt on the bike or whatever, but there's also other options for that. Most of the drivers are, I mean, the riders are part of associations which offers insurance, which we could make mandatory, bonds for reclamation, that's a huge one, the reclamation of the property because if something happens, we don't want the taxpayers paying to make the property whole again.
Right.
So there's, there's ways to ensure that the county isn't on the hook, but yet the county reaps the benefits of not putting our kids in jail and getting the GRT. So I don't see anything with the wrong direction of us doing this. And it would be my goal, and, and right now, if we just could set a special meeting and, and address the actual lease, these are, these are just sample leases that I said that the, that the land commission does right now. But if we could get a lease on agreement and start that process and put it out for RFP and have a nonprofit come in and put bids in from all the nonprofits that want to run this track and, and pick the best one to do it. This is what we do for Otero Arts, this is what we do for the Flickinger Center. This is what, I, I think this is just another opportunity and the best opportunity for our kids to make sure we grow forward.
Yeah, I agree.
So I, I brought these samples so you could see what they look like. We can work with Mr. Sage and get one in RB that is specific for, for our needs and that has our protections. And then when we go out for RFP, we can set out, this is what we are going to require in the RFP and, and do it. But I don't think there's any way we can not do it.
No, I agree, we can't lose the track. My brother used to race out there. It's pretty Wild West days back then, it was pretty fun.
I forgot.
Yeah, that yellow Camaro, oh yeah, he's tearing it up.
I forgot about that.
And then Tucker raced out there in his motorcycle too for a while. Yeah, I don't want to lose it. Do you have anything you want to put in RB?
Yeah, I, so I don't have, I didn't prepare a lease because the, in order to prepare a lease, that needs to be worked out with the State Land Office. And they are on the meeting right now, Mr. Sage, as well as either General Counsel or Assistant General Counsel. And I think it's important to let them update us on where the situation is at. Because as I last understood, they are almost have a lease finalized with, with an entity to operate the, the complex. If that goes through, then this will all be moot. But we can, depending on how they want to work it, we can start preparing something in case whatever is in place now doesn't work out. But, but we need their input in order to do anything, so.
And so the person that they're working with on the lease right now is going to keep it as a track?
That is my understanding, but let's let them specify exactly what's happening.
Would you come up to the mic?
Sure.
And state your name.
My name is Riley Kassloo. My maiden name is Ellinger. I've been out at the racetrack since 1995. So I started racing dirt bikes when I was five years old, so the track is also near and dear to me. I just recently started helping in about 2017 takeover management of what is now known as Tulie Motocross. I just wanted to say, aside from all of that, that the county could benefit in many other ways other than just having this facility for a dirt bike purpose. Another group of people coming in to run it would be just looking at it for a motocross track for monetary reasons. There's a well out there that could benefit the community or county in, in ways of which I don't know, but you could potentially use it. I know they're not digging wells like they used to anymore. That land can be reclaimed back to its original pit and you guys could use it for storage or events. There could be so many other opportunities for the community to use it other than just a dirt bike track. Like you saw before, it used to be car racing, but even just aside from car racing, I just wanted to express that for the county to fight for it and to keep it at $200 a year, in my opinion, is a low risk for something that could be benefited other than just dirt bike racing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
RB, we need to vote on this. I will excuse myself from the vote, but it needs to be voted on if it wants to pass. The State Department or the State Land Office needs to know that we are interested in this and would like to go into the bidding process of it, if, if there is one. They haven't signed on the dotted line yet, so it's nothing set in stone. But they have approached me on this same issue months ago. When I came to the admin to talk to them about it, the big deal was the refurbishment back to original state with the county's biggest issue. Now that they're coming in with these other options on getting rid of that, we need to pursue it.
So again, I'm going to let the State Land Office talk, but as far as, even if the county leases it, any sublease the county does, it's going to have to be at a fair market value rate. We're not going to be able to lease it for any cheaper than the State Land Office is willing to lease it. What I did ask and that they were supposed to look into is if in-kind donations were permissible under these leases. It's under our property with the, under state statute, we're able to lease it and either accept fair market value payment or we can accept, you know, volunteer in-kind services that equal to the fair market value.
And we do that and how many other different deals that we're tied in with?
And we do, and, but it is, that is under a different section of statutes. Because this is under public lands, the State Land Office, I don't know if that is permissible. So I've asked them to find that out. Because if it is, then sure, we could explore that, but.
And I just want to make it clear too, I don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. I'm, we, I want to make a decision based on what they say and I want something done in a week. I mean, I'm tired of everything taking, just like my hair could run dry.
So Mr. Sage, if you're, if you're going to hear us, please provide the commission with an update and any info you have regarding where the lease is going and what's available.
Yes, good afternoon, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Great, great. Good afternoon to Otero County, including commissioners, staff and residents. Before I jump in, I would just like to extend my appreciation to all our first responders, including our firefighters on this day, 9/11. I know you all had a lengthy conversation in terms of how best to support that. So I just want to, on behalf of the State Land Office, recognizing today as extend our appreciation to our first responders. So having said that, my name is Mike Sage. I have the privilege of serving as Assistant Commissioner for Commercial Resources. The New Mexico State Land Office, under the direction of Commissioner of Public Land Stephanie Garcia-Richard, manages approximately 9 million surface acres and 13 million subsurface acres. The mission of the agency is to use state trust land to raise revenue for New Mexico public schools, hospitals, colleges and other public institutions. Revenue is raised by leasing land for oil and gas and mineral exploration, business and commercial operations such as renewable energy projects, agricultural livestock grazing, outdoor recreation and much more. Over the last six years, the agency has broken record after record earning over $10 billion for New Mexico's public schools, universities and hospitals. This money reduces the tax burden on many families, providing support for public schools while possible renewable energy, creating affordable housing opportunities and launching job-creating economic development projects. And just want to note that one of the projects that the New Mexico State Land Office recently worked on and was successful was working with the city of Albuquerque and the New Mexico School for the Blind and Visually Impaired with regard to their Albuquerque campus in terms of putting a lease in place that will allow the school for the blind to expand. My understanding that Almergordo is also a location for the school for the blind, but just want to raise, raise that point to know that we are doing everything we can to add value to our residents and our communities across the state of New Mexico. So with that, I just want to be able to highlight a few points. I do have with me other State Land Office staff, Conrad Keagle, who's the manager of our Business Leasing Bureau. Also have Jim Bordigary, who's Director of Commercial Resources. And I have with us Chris Grazer, Assistant General Counsel. With New Mex, as I mentioned, the New Mexico State Land Office, we make money by leasing our land for economic development, for revenue generation. And basically with all our commercial operations, a business lease is required. And the way we have our system set up is any business lease over five years has to be bid out. Accordingly, the majority of our bids are less than five years. So a lot of the oil and gas industry, their business leases, they're five years. So what they'll do is they'll have a five-year lease, that five-year lease will run its course and then they'll renew it and they'll continue on until they no longer need that land. At that point, they reclaim the land and then relinquish it back to the State Land Office. Anything more than five years requires a public bid. So you actually have to pay for appraisal, you have to pay for advertising costs. So there's some upfront capital and plus two, there's no guarantee that once a, a business lease goes out to bid that you're going to get it. So there's a preference there for the five years or less. You don't have to go out and bid, you can renew once that five year runs. The, the new development and what you all have in front of you is an economic development lease. Once again, this was a recent change in our language, recognizing the uniqueness of cities and counties with regards to economic development, for them to pursue economic development projects. Oftentimes, the private sector needed site control longer than five years. So the economic development lease was a mechanism in which we could, could go out to 40 years on a lease, working directly with cities and counties. And as I mentioned, the city of Albuquerque, the school for the blind visually impaired example, that is an example of an economic development lease where a city of Albuquerque is the subleasing and then they leased to the school for the blind and they will get that project done. And so with regards to Tulie, Tulie is a unique project and I have my staff here to be able to provide some more detail, project detail. But I just want to highlight that I've been in conversations with Commissioner Madely, I've been in conversations with Commissioner Varela and recently had conversations with County Attorney Nichols. And in my conversations with, originally with Madely, back in, I want to say April 2024, we went down to Tulare Rosa and we sat down with, with Commissioner Madely and said basically, we have, we have a situation with Tulie where we do not have an existing lease in place. We are currently working through the process. Is there any interest on behalf of the county in participating in this project? This conversation happened in April 2024. At that time, the feedback we, the State Land Office received was county participation would be, you know, would be a stretch. There was a couple of concerns. Mainly what was noted was the reclamation piece. As I mentioned, once your business lease has run its course, the business lease has, has expired and you have relinquished that land, you have an obligation to return that land back to its original state. And so when we did a tour out of Tulie with Commissioner Madely and I, we recognized that there was a serious or there was a large reclamation effort that would be need to return that footprint back to its existing, existing state. And I believe some back of the napkin math, we were estimating six figures in order to, to, to do that reclamation. And at that time, Commissioner Madely indicated that he just could not, you know, in, in good consciousness, sign up Otero County taxpayers for that liability. And so in that conversation, Madely, Commissioner Madely also indicated that for all intents and purposes, if there's an opportunity for a private sector lead to, to take the business lease and run with it, that that would be the option of the county. Fast forward to August of 2024, we were contacted by Commissioner Varela inquiring about Tulie. At that time, I indicated that we were working with multiple applicants and we had an applicant that had separated themselves from the pack and that we were actively working with said applicant to finalize a, a business lease. And in my conversations with Commissioner Varela, it was also relayed to the State Land Office that once again, if there's a private sector lead, that that would be the preference of the county. And so in both my conversations with Madely and Varela, the one thing that they were crystal clear on, and I think they highlighted right off that, was the importance of this track for the community. They recognized, Commissioner Madely indicated that this was a, a facility that was used by all, all members of the community, not just the riding community, that it formed a, a, a kind of a social gathering place where the community could gather. This was reinforced by Commissioner Varela. So basically what the State Land Office was hearing from our, from Otero County was that one, that there was a private sector lead, that would be the preference. And two, that we needed to get this facility up and running as soon as possible and we needed to do everything we could to get that asset back in use in the community. And so that has been the, the direction that the State Land Office has been running in is one, we want to make sure that this asset gets, is back into the community as quickly as possible. And two, that we have an operator in place that would be able to satisfactorily operate the facility both on the front end and on the back end requirements, you know, should that lease run its course. So that has been our, our, our conversations with Otero County. I will go ahead and bring in Mr. Conrad Keagle and Mr. Jim Bordigary to just speak more about the interaction, the, the project particulars of Tulie. Go ahead, Jim. Looks like you may be having some technical difficulties here. If you all can just bear with us one minute, we'll see if we can get this issue resolved. Conrad, if you're available? Commissioners, it seems to be, you seem to be having some technical difficulties. If you just want to give me a minute, let me just make sure that we are good on my end. I'm going to go ahead and turn off my camera and, and I will be right back with you all. I'm going to go ahead and turn off my camera and I will be right back with you all in one minute.
Okay.
Good afternoon, can you hear me?
Hmm?
We can hear you.
Yeah, my apologies for, we often have problems with the Teams platform. So my apologies, and I guess I'll turn my camera on now, but my name is Jim Bordigary, I'm the director of the Commercial Resources Division, and so I've worked with Michael and Conrad and Chris. I think Michael laid out the situation at the site pretty well. We had been working with the prior operators and others to put a lease in place and really did not get far. And consequently, we received interest from other applicants from the area and from out of state even, and had gotten very far down the road to executing a lease with a party that will hopefully bring the track back to life so that you have fall and winter motocross in the area. The thing I would add to what Michael said about the five-year leases is that we do not necessarily renew leases. We often reissue leases, assuming that the parties have acted in good faith on the site, have complied with the terms and conditions of the leases and have maintained their financial standing with the state land office. A lot of those things did not occur in the past and that's why we find ourselves where we're at today. And so that's really been the big addition that I have to add to what Michael says. We're very excited about the prospect of this new applicant and we hope that it comes to fruition and we should know very soon here whether it's not, but we also look forward to working with the county if the applicant is successful and even if they're not along the terms of an economic development lease like was discussed earlier. That's about all I have to say unless there's any questions from the commission.
While this new party and the lease is being processed by the state land office, is there any willingness by the state land office to engage with the county in starting a lease for the same piece of land?
Well, I don't want to speak out of place for Michael or the commissioner. Ultimately, the commissioner is the deciding factor here. However, we are very far down the road with this new applicant and it would come as a surprise to me if we weren't able to execute a lease, but as everybody in the room knows, until we have an agreement in place, there's no agreement in place. But I think it would be, I think it would be a bad faith with them and I think it would perhaps be a waste of time to go down that path with the county. That's my personal opinion.
I think I would like to see it work concurrently and who can get it done faster. The vision for the county to run this again is for a nonprofit that's going to reinvest into our community. Obviously, the commissioners don't have any interviewing or deciding factor per se on the RFP process, that team brings to us their selections. So as far, all we do is designate the way that we want this run and how. So in essence of time, I would like to be able to work concurrently with the state land office and if we can get this contract with the county done as fast as possible, that's the direction I would like to pursue.
Commissioner, one of the, if I could, you know, one of the options as Mr. Bordigary indicates that we are well down the path in terms of potentially finalizing a business lease with a private entity. Having said that, I just want to bring to the county's attention that the original development, that the original Tully, that that original lease had a footprint of 640 acres. So a full section of land was basically unleased from New Mexico State Land Office. It is our understanding as we have worked through this business lease process that the real footprint, the impacted footprint is approximately 80 acres, give or take. So as we begin to finalize this business lease, we are shrinking that business lease from 640 acres, basically down to approximately 80 acres, right? That is what will be under this lease. Having said that, that opens up the possibility and it opens up the adjacent, what would that be, 560 acres in and around that facility that is currently, could be leased by the county. And I know I had conversations with Attorney Nichols and even Commissioner Madley regarding the opportunity, you know, for the county, if there is a desire to play a role, to potentially lease that adjacent property, bring that into the county domain and look to create complementary activities, potentially a multi-sport complex that, you know, could potentially, now that you have motorized on Tully, an adjacent complex could provide non-motorized, it could provide walking trails. They're so recognized, I'd like for the county to recognize that while all of the Tully lease, the 80 acres may be, you know, far down the road, the adjacent property, the property adjacent to that facility is certainly available for, you know, to be leased by the county. And that could certainly, like I said, open up the opportunity to do something complementary. Where at the end of the day, you not only have Tully with the motorized, but you have companion activities right next door that basically complement and further enhance the overall use of that area. That is certainly a possibility.
And one other thing I would bring up, Michael, thank you for that, is that the young lady that spoke earlier with regards to her prior involvement at the track and the number that she threw out of $200, that, I want to be really clear that that's not an accurate number. We're required by statute to get fair market value for our lands. While we do have some latitude there, the number that was thrown out would not be an acceptable thing for us. So if we were to enter into an agreement with the county or anybody else, it would be at fair market value. And the lease that is being negotiated right now is significantly higher than that. Also, I would add to the commissioner and your concern about how things have dragged out and that you're ready to move on with this, is that we will know by the end of the month whether this lease is going to come to fruition or not. So while it is a little bit of time, it's not a significant additional amount of time.
So are you saying that you want to move forward with the business that seems to be completing the applicant? And then here we do two weeks and then they don't complete the process and then we'll be starting all over again, trying to call for another meeting and then reconsider and so it'll be December before we're actually getting anything done?
Commissioner Varela, I'm actually not saying that, but what I am saying is that we are so far down the path with this applicant that it would be surprising to me if the deal did not come to fruition. Now again, you never know until everybody signed up on the agreement, but I would be surprised by that. The problem with proceeding with an application is going to take county staff time to put together the application, get us the information and the payment for the application, and I would just caution against that. Of course, you can do whatever you think is in the best interest of the county. I wouldn't discourage that, but I think a slight wait would be a good idea.
And Jim, on the conversation with the $200 a year lease, that was in a conversation with Michael and myself when we met earlier. If the county would go back, it would be a little different deal. That was strictly conversation between Michael and myself.
My apologies, Commissioner Madley, that's what I heard the young lady say when she spoke at the dais.
Is anyone on from the state land office aware if the county was to lease it and then sublease it, if we were, it would be able to take in kind payments for the rent? Or is it only cash value?
We do accept services in lieu occasionally. I guess it would depend on what that was and what the benefit was. We have to take a look at that.
The benefit would be back to the county, the infrastructure, the economy that has spent into the county of Otero County, New Mexico.
Understood, and we would need to see what the benefit was to the New Mexico State Land Office and our trust. We were required to raise money for the beneficiaries of the trust and so that's kind of the quid pro quo that we'd be looking for. Chris, do you have any comments on that aspect?
Thank you, Jim. Chris Grazer, Assistant General Counsel. We're required by our governing statute to obtain true value for the land. There are instances in which we accept services, but those are services directly related to maintenance or improvement or protection of those lands. We unfortunately, no matter the level of benefit to the community, aren't allowed to accept services to the community in lieu of rent payments.
So if it's not $200 a year, what do you think that number would be?
Well, I would tell you, I'm sorry, Conrad, did you hear me talking?
Uh, no.
So the rent, the rent that we're looking at right now, ballpark, the rent is beginning at about 6,000 a year, I think. And then it's increasing over the term with an annual escalation to 11,000, and those are just rough numbers, those aren't actual numbers, but that's from my recollection, that's where we're at.
And that number doesn't change government to government?
Again, we're required, as Chris better explained than me, to get a value for value that is to the benefit of the state land trust. And so while we truly appreciate the economic development potential that it would bring to the county, we're required as trustees to bring value to the trust.
What would be distinguishable between a private business lease with, directly with the state land office versus a lease with the county leasing the land and then subleasing it to a private business? Can you confirm that any private business interested in subleasing from the county would still have to do all of the application requirements that an applicant would have to do with the state land office? They would have to pay the same amount of money? I think everything would be virtually the same, except that the county could execute a 40-year lease potentially through the new economic development provision. Is that basically where it would be?
I think if I understood your question, that's accurate, yes. The big differentiation would be the 40-year term.
Would there potentially be additional requirements on the county due to procurement rules and statutes?
I don't know what your procurement rules and statutes are, so I couldn't comment on that. We would require an application just like we would require from anybody. We would require that from the county. And then the sublease that you were entering into with the sublese would be subject to our approval.
And so the example we've been provided between the city of Albuquerque and the school for the visually impaired, that was contemplated and set before the lease was entered, you know, during the, that's why the lease was drafted, because they already knew that was going to be for the operation of the school, by the school for the visually impaired. In this instance, the county wants an operational motocross track, but I think we'd have to go out to bid for someone to operate it. I don't know how we'd go out for bid before we have the lease. So how could this process work if that's the county's intent?
Well, again, I don't know what your particular procurement rules are, but I'll tell you how the school for the blind came about in a short fashion. So the school for the blind actually is one of our beneficiaries and so, you know, there's kind of a special relationship there, but it didn't change how we do business. So we were only able to offer them a five-year lease, just like anybody else, because of their standing as far as, they're not a municipality, they're not an independent school district, they're not any other classes that are called out of the statute. So this blind approached the city of Albuquerque to see if they would be interested in leasing the site and subleasing it back to them so that they could benefit by that 40-year term. And the city of Albuquerque thought that that was a benefit to them and would also benefit the school and their population. And so they entered into that base lease and then prepared the sublease for the school for the blind, which allowed them to enter into, like I said, that 40-year agreement. As far as the motocross track is concerned, from our perspective, you could have the 40-year lease with us, which assuming you met the application requirements, we would, and everything else concerned, we would execute. And then if you're able by your rules and regulations to enter into a sublease without it going through a public process, I assume you could do that. But again, I can't speak to your particular processes.
And if I could, Michael here, sorry, Commissioner for interrupting you. You know, when I went down and I talked with Commissioner Madley in April of 2024, at that time, we did not have this private sector party as part of the conversation. When I went down to Madley, basically, we had in process, we had interest from two local applicants and we were working with them and we had made requests for information and we were waiting for basically a complete application. When I went down and I met with Commissioner Madley in April of 2024, at that time, since we did not have a complete application, that's when I broached to Commissioner Madley the possibility of, hey, if we don't get a application from the private sector, is there any desire on the part of county to potentially look at doing an economic development lease? Once again, the feedback was, you know, due to the reclamation, due to the unknown cost, the desire was for a private sector lead. So when I left Tula Rosa in April, right, I had, like I said, I had two entities showing interest and I had the county basically indicating that at that time, they were going to go ahead and step back and kind of wait and see. Since that conversation, we had this third party step up, expressed interest, and in that timeframe, post-April, they have been basically able to bring their application over the finish line. They were able to get us an application and I think I've told that to Commissioner Madley and Commissioner Varela, that whoever gets an application in first will receive all due consideration and will look at that thoroughly and make a determination. And so since that April 2024 meeting, like I said, we never received an application until recently. And so now that we have that application, And so now that we have that application, we received that application prior to Commissioner Borella reaching out. And so in my conversation with Commissioner Borella, I did inform her that we did have a private sector entity that was expressing interest, that we were working on finalizing an application. So as Mr. Boarder Gary indicated, at this time, the preference for the state land office would be to give all due consideration to the entity that submitted an application. And I believe that's what Mr. Boarder Gary has laid out, is that we have received an application, we are working through it, we are very close. We feel like in a matter of days, a matter of weeks, that by the end of the month, we will know whether this applicant is able to ultimately, if we're able to finalize the application. Should that fail to materialize, like I said, we could certainly reach back out to the county and have the county play a role. But, you know, in my conversations, the feedback we got was, if there's a private sector entity, let's run with that. And we have a private sector entity. That private sector entity has agreed to the rent schedule. They've agreed to take on the liability for reclamation. They've indicated a desire to address some of the light you see out there, just in terms of the current state of the property. So the private sector entity has stepped up and has indicated they have the ability to address a lot of those concerns. And so in the back of my mind, when I'm hearing the commissioners say that, you know, we want a private sector lead, we thought we were all working in the same direction. And so I think we are still working in the same direction. The goal is to finalize this BL as soon as possible, so we can get that asset back into the community, operating efficiently. And as I mentioned, if there's a desire for the county to participate, like I said, there is property adjacent that we think would be great in terms of an expanded complex. But at this point, our preference would be to give due consideration to the entity that submitted the application.
So you only have one entity that has submitted an application?
We've had multiple entities submit applications.
And only one isn't the front of the application process?
That's correct, Commissioner.
And if all three of them completed at the same time, what's your determining factor?
Well, that's a really good question. So there's a bit of discretion involved in that. But what we look at is track record. We look at capability to perform. We look at prior interactions with the land office, in the case of a couple of the applicants that have applied. And then we make our best decision in the best interest of the trust.
And in that case, since you have three applicants that are pursuing this, do you think that the county taking over it and having local control of local decisions would be better?
I don't have an opinion on that.
I will say it would be more complicated if the county were involved. Again, the Albuquerque situation, the school for the visually impaired is a state public entity, they're part of the school system, special education. This being private entities, it's going to be completely different. Potentially, it could come under Local Economic Development Act, but just perusing that quickly, I don't see how the motocross track would qualify for businesses that are okayed in that act. It's highlighting manufacturing and agricultural and stuff. It's not... This is more of a service and entertainment thing, and I don't see that in there right now. So unless it can squeeze under there, it's going to have to be still open to bid and allowing any entity that wants to apply, apply.
For sure. I think that's the way it should be. If the county wants to take it over, then it would be a bid process and that we set the guidelines of what kind of an entity we want to run this motocross track. You know, a nonprofit, one somebody that's not there to pad their pockets, but to reinvest into the community. One that, you know, has definitely a good reclamation plan, a business plan, I mean, the whole entire aspect. But it just kind of seems, with us dragging along since April or whatever, we're wasting valuable time when we need to be getting something done. So I wanted to get it done, whatever the fastest means possible is, and the best for our community. I know that this brings in people from all around the state, Texas, and travel to come and race, and no matter what, it's a benefit for our community, but it's also very local. And I don't want to see somebody from Alaska running our racetrack. I want to see somebody that's going to be reinvesting in our community.
Michael, I got a... My understanding that there was the three applications, and then you're working with the one that you're working in the process now, but one of the other applications has already turned in their package, so why are they not being considered?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and defer to staff on that. But I think, generally speaking, and staff can add more to that, is that while we have received an application, we have not received a complete application. And I just want to be clear on that, is that we have a complete application from one entity. With regard to the others, we have parts of an application. And if I could just speak to, you know, Commissioner Borella's, you know, the desire to see this in the community, this asset back in the community, we share that same consideration. This asset does us no good to not be utilized, to not be generating revenue for the beneficiaries, to be a blight for the community, to have this open-ended reclamation issue outstanding. So from our standpoint, we absolutely share the commission's, you know, desire to see this asset move. As I mentioned, we have an entity that has stepped forward that we are currently working to finalize. As if we do finalize that application, within that BL framework, within that business leasing framework, anytime within those five years, if that entity indicates, hey, you know what, the numbers are not working out, it's not what we envisioned, there is opportunity for that BL to be relinquished prior to that five years. Ultimately, that would be a decision of the less seed. Should that take place, then we would certainly know that, you know, having this conversation, that the county would be a viable Plan B. And so as I've indicated, you know, in the back of my head, in my conversations with the commission, I heard private sector lead, or let's get it up and running as soon as possible. And basically, that is what we've been doing, is we've been trying to find, to work to finalize at least as quickly as possible to get this asset back in the community. Now, like I said, as Mr. Boarder Gary indicated, we are at a point where we are close to finalizing the BL. And so what I would advise the commission is, you know, give us a little more time at the end of the month, let us work to see if we can finalize that lease. If that lease does get finalized, the asset will be operational, the private sector will have stepped forward, the private sector will start making payments, they'll take on that reclamation piece, and we'll see activity back in the community. Should that lease fail to materialize over the next few weeks, we certainly know that the county is willing to step in. We have our counsel on the call here, who would certainly help us prep any lease, you know, should this private sector entity go forward. And then also, as we continue to monitor for these next five years, if there's any inkling, you know, that leasing is unable to continue, we will certainly pull the county in. But at this point, we felt like we, you know, we were delivering to the commission, basically, what they've indicated, which is a private sector lead that will be able to get this asset back in the community as quickly as possible.
Okay, Michael, one other question on that. On the application that they applied for, you're saying that they don't have a complete... Have they been notified that they needed another piece of their application to be turned in?
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and ask Mr. Conrad Geagle if he can provide some information to the commissioner, or just give a quick verbal update regarding some of our interruption and where we're at.
Conrad may be experiencing some of the same communications issues. Conrad, can you hear us? Well, until Conrad jumps on, I'm going to just give a quick synopsis. And we did have other applicants. And the applications that we received have been incomplete despite staff working with the applicants for months and months and months. We've gotten the application piecemeal, and even most recently, not answering direct questions that we've asked. One of those things being the payment of holdover rent, which was incurred by the operators of the track, operating and trespassing the lease. And neither of the two applicants that you referenced provided any affirmation that they would reimburse the land office for the holdover rent, which was being assessed for the time that they were operating the track with no lease, and continued to do so even after receiving notice from the land office to cease and desist operations. So, you know, on top of not having complete applications, the fact that the applicants are difficult to deal with, that goes back to the commenting I made about how we choose the applicant that we're going to ride with. And those interactions definitely have an effect on that. So Commissioner Matherley, in short, no, we didn't get complete application packages, and we, to this date, still do not have complete application packages.
So I make a proposal that we set a date, September 26th, to have another special meeting called to consider the application for taking over this land lease for the county. That gives you two weeks to finish with this entity of whatever's happening. And if it's not done by then, then the county will consider doing it themselves.
Commissioner Borella, I think that's good for the county to put that on your agenda. And we will let the county know where we're at, at that time, with this applicant.
Okay, and you'll have a lease for us to consider on the 26th?
Commissioner Matherley, we won't have a lease to consider until there's an application to consider the lease.
Okay, so what process do we need to do to that?
So I can forward to the commission our application link. And if the county wants to go ahead and prepare an application in anticipation of that, you can have that prepared. I'd be happy to do that.
So if we submit an application tomorrow, how long will it take to get a lease to consider?
Well, we're going to go down the path with this applicant before we consider another application.
Have you given the other applicant a timeline, Jim?
Well, they're performing per our negotiations and their application. And we are awaiting a couple of final pieces to put the lease together. But as I mentioned earlier on, and I think Michael did as well, we're hopeful to have, if not this week, certainly by the end of the month, a lease in place. And at that time, if we don't have a lease by the end of the month, I think it would be prudent for us to begin negotiations with the county, yes. So I think, looking at the end of the month to reconvene, it's a good idea, but I don't want to commit our team to have a lease in place, absent an application, or if it's premature, if we're going with a different party.
What does an application entail?
It's pretty detailed. And, you know, part of the application, there's a whole checklist. So there would be a survey of the land, there would be... There's a whole checklist. There's a variety of pieces of information that will be required. But I think none of it would be extraordinary for the county, and I think you'd be able to put it together in very short order.
And does that include a survey, or I mean appraisal, along with the survey?
It would not require an appraisal.
Okay.
If it were, now, if the private sector went out for a long-term bid versus the county, they would be required to provide an appraisal.
And then again, Jim, if it was to fall back to the county and the county accepted it, we would have to have, whatever we did on a bid, you would have to approve whoever we had the option with?
That's correct, sir.
So we go out for RFP and then do that process, and then the commission agrees on who to award it to, and then we have to send it to you for further approval?
That's correct.
Is that policy or is that statute?
Well, I believe it's statute. For certain, it's ruled. I believe it's also statutory. I'd have to defer to counsel on that, but all the time...
It is, I can confirm that.
All subleases are required to be approved by the commissioner of the lands.
I guess we just hurry up and wait then?
Yeah. I don't think we've got much of a choice.
So you will notify us as soon as, if your other party, if they're complete and they're accepted, you'll notify us to let us know?
Absolutely.
Okay, I really appreciate you guys coming on today.
Thank you.
Not a problem, commissioners. We'll be in touch and appreciate the conversation. I think we're all in agreement here that it's an asset that needs to be in the community sooner than later. I think we share that commitment. We just ask that you give us a little more time. But it is good to know that the county stands by, ready to assist should this lease fail to materialize with the private sector.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
And to the commission, real quick, I just want to say, you guys have incredible endurance. This has been a long meeting that we've been on the whole time, and...
You have no idea. Some go longer than this.
Good job.
Thank you.
You all have a good one now.
Thank you.
Thank you. So there's really nothing to vote on?
Hurry up and wait.
Yeah.
That's what we always vote on, hurry up and wait.
Hurry up and wait.
We're going to wait on them.
My survey came in, 33 acres is what we're footprinting on. He keeps saying 80. And he's running cows out there, so they have a grazing lease. So he's saying they're not making money, but if they're running a grazing lease, the cows run through us.
So what are they saying, that, is it your application they're referring to that's incomplete?
Yeah, so what it was, was they sent out a supplemental packet at one point.
Yeah, so what it was, was they sent out a supplemental packet at one point, which required a large sum of money. And it does get a little bit complicated here. We were partners with a partner who took over and removed George as ownership in an illegal manner. So it's not something that we can pay right now because it's in ownership and did not renew the lease. That's something we can't pay right now that they want payment for because we're waiting for the law to handle that. It was here with this and they sent it to state police.
But even the back lease, I didn't mind paying. But Jim is, he wants three years in advance and he's raising it a thousand every year. And he's not telling me where it'll ever stop, you know? So they're almost at 10,000 on third year a year.
So in the supplemental packet, they said you would, you have to agree to paying 3,000 for the first year, 3,000 the second, five, then seven, then 10. And so when we said, we don't agree to the supplemental terms we want to negotiate, they said, we're not negotiating. You either pay this amount of money or we're not negotiating with you. So everything else in the packet has been completed minus us agreeing to pay 3, 3, 5, 7, 10.
Didn't you, so was the two-lee motocross business before, now you informed a nonprofit, it's a whole different new business application? So none of that back rent or anything hypothetically doesn't apply to you because it's a different entity?
Yeah.
Although on the states, I understand where the state's coming from, where they had two applicants, which was two ex-partners fighting. A new track, people come in and say, hey, we wanna do it. So they're like, you know what, if you two are gonna continue to make this difficult on us, we're gonna select them. Although, and I do understand from a business standpoint that that could be beneficial, but coming from the community, knowing what this track means to the community and how beneficial it could be to having it as the community versus someone like they said, coming in a track, not knowing what their numbers are gonna be, of which this particular other business has a bad reputation for not being friendly. Their numbers are not gonna succeed. They won't benefit. And then in the end, they're gonna fail and it's not going to benefit the community.
But if it does fail, he has to make them reclaim it. He can't just let them out because he's telling us, we have to come up with a $100,000 bond reclaim minimum. But then he's saying if it falls apart, then we'll just give it to you guys. And I'll make them reclaim it. That doesn't make sense to me. Because the other people, I think it's more already that are applying for it, they can't afford to do that. And I have a guy that has a big company that already said he'll reclaim it, you know, so.
And although the state is, in a sense, saying that we are not good applicants because when that lease lapsed, we haven't caught up on that payment yet, it's not quite fair to say because George has run the track since early 2000. I mean, it's been nearing 20 years that we have been running this facility. So although there is that minor situation that we need to get handled, which is likely gonna take us to a court of law, and we will pay the state what we owe the state, to them, it's a bad taste in their mouth. And they're like, you know, because of that, not wanting to deal with us, which in a sense is understanding. But I just don't think this new applicant is gonna benefit the county.
Have any charges been drawn with the state police investigation?
I have not gotten, the state police have not returned messages. Once it was transferred out of the county to the state police, I've not gotten anything in return. And there's major, major fraud charges as well that will go in the line with that.
Maybe take this to the D.A.'s office directly.
Yeah, I'm just wondering why the state police hasn't followed--
And although they're not gonna consider our applicants, I really do truly believe that we would be the best subleasees because this other party has to bring equipment from four hours away down here, of which they have to haul down. They're going to bring their own crew likely, which they're not going to be asking for volunteers here. And there's volunteer opportunities for the EMTs, EMSs, firefighters to be out there learning, training. They could be practicing landing helicopters out there on this land. But if you have somebody else who's in charge of that lease, those opportunities are gonna be very minimal because they're in it for the money.
And that's what I meant by the local control.
Well, didn't he say it was out of state?
They have one, out of state applicant.
He mentioned that it was out of state too. So to come in and take you guys' money.
Yeah.
Right.
And although it would be good to be racing back as a community, like you said, it just wouldn't be really beneficial for the community. It would just be racers racing here. Some people would benefit maybe the hotels, you know, but there wouldn't be any local volunteer opportunities or employment opportunities to be had, but.
Well, I guess we'll wait till the end of the month and see if you can call the state office and see where your application--
They're not speaking to me right now. It's Jim.
I think it's already decided that they're not going to select us. It would either be the county who would then sublease it, and then you guys would set it up for bid. And we want to go for that bid, obviously. And we're willing to compete with the new bidder. We think we're the better party. Or this.
What I was concerned about, where is he getting what the lands were? Where, how's he coming up with that figure? It went from 3,000 a year to 10,000 a year. Just, I'm like, it's just barren dirt out there. He's not offering. That was actually a pit that we're operating in when they built the highway, Highway 70, Highway 54. That was a pit. So we're down in a pit anyway. He already took all the good material out of it. So, I mean, they're actually not offering anything.
I think it was $500 a year when it was for Thomas Speedway.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's not the years I wanted. I'm sorry.
Yeah, we appreciate you guys' time. We're just doing it for the community too.
I know.
All right.
I guess I should have acted in April and told him, yeah.
Yeah, at that time, we didn't have a reclaim--
That wasn't even in the pit. Well, it was.
So understandably so, if you're the commissioner, you're like, you know what, I don't know if we have what it takes to reclaim it. But since then, since we have figured out a plan to reclaim it and we have sweat construction backing us, we have, you know, of which they do for a living, the reclaim is easy for us. But I would be surprised if this, say it's Moyardi, this other track, I'd be surprised if they have the money that it takes to reclaim it. I think it might fall through still.
And what's not being pointed out enough is the unfortunate results of this is because of theft from you and now you're losing all of your investment because of it. And this is completely wrong.
The state wants no part of it. They do not care. They don't wanna care it. You know, so from the get-go, we've been saying, we're trying, originally when this started in 2023, we realized the lease had lapsed because the owner had done, the other part owner had done some shady things. So we call up, hey, I'm calling so we can get renewed on the lease. We had no idea it lapsed. And that's where we are now. I mean, we weren't not trying to pay the lease. We've tried everything we could possibly to get caught up on this. And--
The state said they didn't bill me in 2020, '21, and '22 because of COVID. But now they're saying--
And the lease expired during COVID. So when the state was shut down, they didn't reach out to us, tell it was already expired, of which is not necessarily our fault. So then when we were trying to renew it at that point, then we had issues with our partner. And that's where we stand now.
I'm sorry.
Well, yeah, no, that's fine. Yeah.
Oh, we have--
We still have to do our report. So if you guys are gonna go eat lunch, go eat lunch.
Appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Commissioner Matherley?
Hi, Wes Oates. Been talking with Michael, this person that I've dealt with this whole time. Been talking with him back and forth. Been working on some subdivision deal here with Matt and a subdivider here on some theme issues, which still hasn't got settled. Starting to get a little aggravated with that, but anyway. I spent a lot of time talking with Matt and them last week after receiving all of Walt's emails and stuff. I'm glad the vote went the way it did. I think it's gonna be a better deal. You know, Walt kinda quoted some things. That's why I asked where Walt was because I was gonna bring him back up so I could talk to him a little bit. Your volunteer deal is a very, I didn't say they won't. Getting volunteers is very hard sometimes. If you look at any department in this county administration paying positions, people are not applying for it. So--
We're struggling at the museum to get volunteers there. It's everywhere.
Anyway, we'll let that one go. I went to a meeting last night in Chaparral. There's still a dying, struggling little group that keep trying to have their meetings. They're wanting a lot of help from the county, but they just don't understand how the county really works. They're gonna try and have a little hamburger cook-off deal October 5. You know, they want Otero County Sheriff's Department to come over and do security. And I keep telling them, you can't do that. Have it on Otero's side and we'll be glad of that. So they're just not understanding. They are, like Matt said, or one of them said, the OSUMs is starting down there. The new highway, the new intersection change, they're fixing to be under construction on that. I got a really bad feeling on this because with the OSUMs, there's quite a few big trucks that use that. So that little intersection deal is gonna be a nightmare. I hope it, I hope it works out. I really do. So, but other than that, that's about it. One other thing, Juliana, if I can talk to you after this, there was an email you sent me about fraud, something. I don't have any idea.
I sent that to all management to submit that. You don't have to, but if you'd like to, you can complete that and send it directly to Rosetta Lee. She is our CPA from Hinkle and Landers, who's gonna be doing our financial audit. So that's an annual survey that she likes to have completed just to have an idea if there's anything going on she needs to look into.
I sent it in.
Did you? Well, I couldn't get to the survey.
Oh, you couldn't?
No.
Oh, well, it's just an attachment and you fill it out. You can either type into it or print it in handwriting and scan it and send it in. It was just an attached Word document, I believe.
I'll look again, but I couldn't.
Okay.
I haven't resent it. I forgot.
Okay.
I'll do that.
And if you do complete it, you can send it directly to Rosetta Lee. I don't, I'm not gonna look at it. If you send it to me, I'll forward it on. I don't--
Can you just forward it for me?
I did not forward yours because I wasn't sure if you were gonna send it. I can forward it for you if you'd like. Okay, I'll do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, no kidding.
I'll put that in my calendar.
So every time I try to open it, it won't let me. Oh, I shouldn't have said that.
There it is. There it is. That's it.
You're a tech pro now.
Yep, your turn.
I don't know what I've done. I have another thing this month.
I don't believe that.
Kids, we went to the kids' fundraiser. We didn't stay late, but it was a good fundraiser. I had many, many, many fire department meetings, Zoom in-person, learning one side and the other side and all that. And I know a lot about fire departments, but that's resolved, maybe. The biggest, but the biggest thing is, is we have got to support our volunteers. That is probably the biggest complaint that I received, is that they feel like they go out and they contribute to the county and we just say, thanks, see you later. Don't even say thanks. See you next time, something. So we have got to, and I got that same feeling when I was doing the volunteer for the Ria Dosa collection, all of that. You know, when I was, my first focus was supplying to the firefighters. And I was specifically told their policy states that they have to service themselves for 24 hours. And my face was probably the same when I said that. Like, we're here and we're doing it. Why can't we get it to the firefighters? So if that's the attitude of, oh, the policy says that, you know, we don't have to do this, we've gotta change that and support our firefighters all of the time. So I would like to address that a little bit, too. I took a tour of the jail last week, I think. Pretty, that's my second tour of the jail. This time was really, I guess, a little more interactive. What roles everybody does and all of that. So it was, it was very good. For the purposes of, it was with the judicial and so they can see that side of it. So it was very good, just a couple of hour tour. I met with the Laloos Water Department. It's the first time I've attended one of their meetings. Very good meeting, which of course opens problems. And the flooding was their first problem because the flooding coming down Valley View in those areas did expose their water lines. Now, we don't maintain that alleyway where their water lines are, but the water is, that we're diverting, I guess you could say, or not diverting, is going down there and it's costing them thousands of dollars to deal with. And so then that also opened up to the Dollar General store. And I don't know if you approved that subdivision--
I have not seen it yet. And it is just a claim of exemption.
Does it come to us like this kind of stuff does? No. Okay, because digging into that deeper, that Dollar General wants to come in on that Valley View and Laloos Road lot. And Laloos Road is where they wanna put their entrance. So now we have Valley View and then less than 100 feet, you'll have Dollar General, and less than 100 feet, you'll have Section Road. And that intersection, being on a curve already, already has accidents. And I know that this, with that intersection, it will create more accidents, period. So I was saying, well, I want this, before I talked to Sylvia, knew what I was talking about. Said, no, I want the entrance on Valley View. I don't want it to be on Laloos Road. To me, that's a fix. Then discovering the county owns half of Valley View and then the city owns the rest of Valley View and the road is closed because the water plant that's up there. But now the city is saying, no, they don't own that land. You guys own that land. So nobody owns that land. All I know is that road is falling apart, very, very dangerous on the city side. The county side is not. But where the city has there, where they can close it off, you literally cannot turn around a one car without falling in off of the road on both sides. So something needs to be done with that road, too. And if it's counties, then we need to take it and do it. And I want Dollar General to put their entrance on there. So that's why, if it was to come onto the commission, I don't know on that Dollar General.
Well, with the claim of exemption process, we, the only authorization we have is for the land division. We don't have anything else that I can say, well, you have to do your entrance here. You have, I don't. And 99% of the claim of exemptions that come to me, their future plans are never disclosed. So if that claim of exemption came to me without knowing that that's what they were going to do, I do not have the authorization to ask them what they're going to do with it, since we have no permitting.
No, it's gonna be a problem. And regardless, I would like to see that road addressed. If it's not the city's road, then let's take it over. Let's fix it. Let's open it all the way through. And there's no reason for it to be closed. If they think that they need security, then they can put up a tolerance on their water plant. And so that's all I have on that. Went to the-- Went to the electric co-op meeting. It was very informational. But then I went to the fire, what meeting was that? The emergency planning meeting for the, at the emergency services. And that's where I was kind of reaffirmed on the Forest Department's blocking the access to tear down those trees for the easement. So it's a huge issue.
Yeah.
When the co-op talked about it, I really didn't think it was that important, but after hearing it again...
And where's the easement at? Where?
It's the line that goes from here all the way to Claude Croft.
Oh, wow.
And they want to clean, just the fallen leaves.
And Jason said no?
Yes. He's the one that pulled the plug, and I was, and I'm told that it was completely done, ready to start. So that, in that meeting on the 25th, is they're having in Claude Croft to talk about that. And I'm going to make sure I got the right date here real quick. Gets at six o'clock at the lodge pavilion on the 25th.
September?
Yes. And then Matt just lost a constituent meeting.
Oh, I wrote on, that's yours. I wrote on the other one.
Oh, you can have it.
Well, I've got that one.
I'll put it in my folder. All right, but that's, I think I did.
Okay, I'll go quick. Let's see, since our last meeting, I volunteered at the Otero County Heritage Days, which was really good, had a really good turnout. Attended a Zoom meeting with the Council of Foreign Affairs, attended the ceremony at the end of the Mountain Gods to recognize everyone that helped with the fires, and Amy was recognized and very deserving. Attended the Tulare Basin Regional Dispatch Authority Board meeting, attended the Environment, Energy, and Land Use meeting for the National Association of Counties. And today I'm leaving, as soon as this meeting's over, to go to Albuquerque to set up for the Otero County booth at the State Fair. So that's it for me. R.B.?
Oh, sorry.
Since Pamela's not here, you're up.
Last Thursday, I went to the BLM conference on, it turned out to be about recreation. And so they, it's all about how they could support and increase recreation, which is good to see. It's one of the statutory five uses for public land. And then they were, so I got asked why I was there a lot, and I was like, well, like, "Commission cares about public land because we have ninety percent of our county's public land, and they are concerned about ranchers in our county and them being able to use their grazing rights." So I said, "We believe that that grazing and recreation can go hand in hand, and they are mutually exclusive, and that we support the economic development. We want more recreation." What we were against is the unconstitutional conservation rule that they recently implemented, so that's why we were there. But they were really talking about that, just recreation. So then I just made a pitch for the lake that I want above Almagordo because that is recreation.
Absolutely.
So, and they have a lot of, a lot of the land above Almagordo is BLM, so I told them about the congressional funding for the flood study, and the Corps of Engineers would be doing that and that we can follow up. I did make contact with one of the Los Cruces guys there and we'll, I got to follow up with them and see about getting him to maybe appear at least virtually at our monthly meetings. So we have open lines of communication with them like we do the Forest Service. And then on Friday, I had a meeting with a representative from the YMCA. I reached out to them like six months ago when the city first started talking about getting the pool redone as a way of maybe solving that problem, getting the YMCA here. So they took six months to get back to me, but they finally got back to me. And I thought it was a useful conversation. I think even though the city has plans to move forward, bringing a why to our community would benefit the community and expand what the city can offer and provide access to resources the city doesn't have. So I will have future meetings with them, and I need to form an exploratory committee. So I'll be sending an email out to county, city, Holloman, various community leaders to see who's interested in participating in that and looking at the possibility of doing that.
Of doing the pool?
YMCA to the community.
And that would be on county property?
Ideally, I can't speak for the city, but ideally, they would do a partnership with the city to operate the rec center and maybe other city facilities, at least to start. I don't know. I can see if they want to operate the weed community center.
That'd be awesome.
Way to Chaparral.
Yeah.
But yeah, that's about it for a report today.
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
I want to finish the animal control, like, finish it. Like, set your day aside eight hours and then we'll finish it.
Okay.
Because that way I can have one thing done in my year and a half term saying, "I'm done. I finished one thing."
Okay. Anybody have anything else?
No.
All right, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
I do have something to say. You guys have a trucker's bladder. I cannot believe you guys have not gone to the restroom.
Yes.
I would have still taken a break. I would have been like, "Nope, time out."
I had to take two breaks.